Okay. That's what my meeting is, 6:30. October 26th. Guess what, we're all here.
Yes, we are. Physically, maybe not mentally.
I'm kinda in and out.
November 9th, you said October 26th.
No, it's the May meetings.
It's November 9th.
November 9th, I'm looking at the minutes.
Yes. You had me going for a second.
It told ya, I mean, I don't know.
There we go, there we go.
Should we still make the announcement about broadcasting this thing?
I'm not sure, as far as I understand it, having a meeting in person as a priority reading, with remote being an option is acceptable. And like, I'm not a real disclaimer, I know some boards will just waive the reading of this as a matter of course. I'm not sure if that's required or not.
No, I mean just that it's being recorded.
If you'd like, as a courtesy, just to let people have notice of that.
Are you muted?
We get two participants?
Doesn't look like it.
I'm unmuted.
No, you should be muted, that's why.
I should be muted, okay. I am now, yeah.
These microphones are for everybody, for the whole room. Nobody, no computer should be unmuted who is connected to this.
Sure or later, I'll do it.
That's okay.
Peter, we still need to make the announcement about this being recorded for...
Yes, you are supposed to always say that when you're being recorded.
So this meeting is being recorded for viewing on...
Local television channel.
Television and YouTube and, I don't know, Instagram, maybe, I don't know. Everywhere. Anyway. Minutes of October 26th.
Make a motion to accept the October 26 minutes.
Mr. Chair, just a minor, minor thing. So on page one, there's reference to a special permit for a two lot common driveway on November 9th. It's actually a site plan review on November 23rd.
Oh.
That was the second part of it. The first part was A and R, and that was what happened last time. But they also just informed the board of your next step.
So you want to change the second to the, or your motion to, with corrections?
I also had a suggestion, I don't think it relates to what you said, but, uh, well, on the first page, page two, one lines down and it says, "A special, we'll necessitate a special permit." I'd just like that to say from the planning board, just to totally clarify.
Oh, instead of the zoning board of appeals?
Or after which it will go, just, um... I like things to be very specific.
The unit does not need setback or comment, no.
Necessitate a special permit from the planning board, and then after which it will go to the building department. Of course, it's our minutes, so I'm not too fussy on that.
I'm just not sure which section you're talking about, Marilyn.
It's the informational section on accessory dwelling.
Oh, on that, okay.
And the first one was on page one, five lines down on, I don't fancy it, per second, Kenneth Court.
And which, what date did you say on that, Dave? I'm sorry, November what?
So on, not November 9th, but November 23rd.
Okay, thanks. With corrections?
One other little bit back, I'm sorry. On page two, under revision of defendant or plan, second line. Uh, Dave shared that only one A and R event submitted. Actually, we didn't, we didn't receive any A and Rs. That was to come, and that's what, hopefully, that's what we have tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Share that no A and Rs instead of only one. As I re-edit rate it, with corrections? In the second?
Second?
With corrections. Is there any great discussion of corrections, additions, additions to the October 26 minutes? Here we are, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Epstein. Dave, did Anita get back to you?
She did, um, can we hold on until...
Okay. All right.
A and R West Side of Maple F. A little different, A and R. I think Dave would be off to do something for the next session.
Okay, I will first say that I did send an email to the applicant today at the beginning that this matter would be taken tonight. If the board's not comfortable taking this matter and voting it, I think it might be an opportunity to continue to the 23rd if it doesn't, if you just look at the timeline, if you're not happy with the information that we're gonna talk about here, so. So the existing condition is this. Existing condition goes from here, down to here, down to here, to here, and to here, and to here, and then back again. This does not currently exist. So what we have here is a house and a barn on one parcel currently. What you'll see in your packet is this plan, and I believe the version you have shows that there's a line that runs this way. That is a zone line that separates TC from RS.
Yeah, yeah.
So the implication of that is that there's a less of an area requirement for a structure in the TC zone than the RS. So this structure, the parcel where the structure is, would meet the requirement for area. However, what you see here is, you see that the land itself is landlocked, and it's only accessible by a 50-foot easement access that was created sometime in the 70s, I believe before a common lot driveway section was added to the by lot. So in splitting the lot, the applicant needs to show a lot that meets zoning compliance for area and frontage. Well, it meets it for area, and it does meet it for frontage by way of a variance from the zoning board of appeals. What the zoning board of appeals did through this action was to allow 0 feet of frontage instead of the required 125 in the TCD zoning district. Um, so this now meets the frontage requirement by way of the variance, and it meets the area requirement in fact, and the access is over an existing condition. So the board can grant this A and R, which it has before tonight. Yes, or any question, I'll try to answer them. Once again, we did ask the applicant to be here.
Yeah. With what Dave explained, I don't have a problem.
I have no problem with it. ZBA's already basically ruled on it, so... This was the existing drive, and then there'll be a new?
No, that, that new piece, he's even got on there, it's non-buildable with the barn. So he can't make it into a lot, so it's just basically, it could get added to their existing property later on.
Yeah, it says to be combined with the land.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, I should've mentioned that.
So all they're trying to do is be able to sell the existing home.
The house line, the barn, will go to this back property here.
The barn, yeah.
This back property is a more stable and agricultural use area.
Right, and they have a little field back there, too, right?
So this barn will go here.
Or over there, I should say.
Correct. After you write back, back to this parcel.
I'll move to endorse.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
We're like, hold the seat, we can still air, do that, the applicant's not here.
He can do that.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Want to file?
There you go. Let me have that. Not fast today.
Great, you come to stay.
Okay. We have five minutes to wait.
So Dave, is this where I should ask my question?
If you'd like, yeah, we can answer that.
What is, what was Anita's comment back? Cause I sent her both documents, the document that I've reviewed, both feeds.
Right, so, an issue here is, is a board member missed two meetings on one matter, one on the 12th and one on the 26th. Uh, the board member filled out the disclaimer form, indicated that they watched the video, and submitted that to the town. The question was whether or not two meetings could be missed or not. Now, on the 12th, there was testimony taken, the hearing was, there was discussion testimony. On the 26th, the meeting was continued without comment because of issues that were still outstanding. The question was whether or not the Mullins rule allows an applicant to admit, to be able to sit on remaining parts of the hearing, given that situation. The answer appears to be yes, because there was no testimony taken on the second meeting, so he didn't miss the meeting, at least as the Mullins rule and the case law describes it. I guess, that's what I was telling.
No, it's, I was just looking at it, Providence Town went through the same thing, and they cited two case law cases where if there's non-substantive issues, then there's no difference.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? The A and Rs don't have a 6:45 timeline on them, just the, just the other thing does. So can we talk about the A and Rs?
I kind of embedded the A and Rs within the hearing.
Yeah. Oh, oh, you did, well.
I, I didn't put them separately, I embedded them in the hearing, cause it was all related.
Oh, okay, well, I submitted them separately, but that's fine.
No, I didn't list, I didn't list it up the top end.
No worries, no worries. I just thought, I was trying to get around the...
I appreciate it.
The, uh...
Clock.
Yeah.
I think you only have like three minutes or so.
Yeah. I got, I made up all these sheets, cause I think there was some confusion on the A and R, so I, I wanted to at least hand these out while I'm waiting.
Um, I can take maybe one out of, out of order. The quarterly commission meeting?
Okay.
Just for the three minutes. So there's a, this is item number 11 on the agenda. There's a handout and a, a way to sign out for it. This is the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission quarterly meeting. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is for the Planning Commission to start its regional master plan process. So this is an important matter. I, I'm not sure if you'll be there as the delegate for the planning board, or not.
Let's put it this way, as of now, yes, tomorrow morning, I will let them know that I will be there.
That'd be great, and I've also circulated this information to any other board member who might be interested. It's not just restricted to delegates. Given that they're looking for feedback on various master plan topics, some of the board members may want to consider whether or not to attend it. If you're able to, that's great. Uh, this is a big deal for them, it's the regional master plan process.
Yes, it's, and I'm gonna push for less meetings.
Less meetings.
Outstanding.
So that's, that's, thanks, Mr. Chair, for that. I don't think there's anything else really can be taken as quickly, but there's one that I left.
Well, actually, we could, uh, we could do item five.
Item five, yes.
Oh, yeah, we have some questions.
What do you want to?
Very, very simply, the marijuana bylaw change does not replace on the warrant, so therefore, we will not be holding the public here.
Good.
Can I ask you some questions before Cleo does?
On what?
On this here, on item five.
Yep.
I struggled with this when I read it, because I, I go back to my Rachel Dolan thing we did four or five years ago about if, if we want to make a change to bylaw, that it should go to the bylaw subcommittee, and I saw that the town administrator sponsored this. Like, does he have, I'm asking the board, I don't think he has the authority to do that.
Well, maybe that's why it was canceled.
No.
Nah, the select board had a big, I watched the thing. Lot of question, two more questions than answers, that's the reason why they got... But I was struggling with that norm, and that's why I thought I better ask the board, cause I get it if we bring up a zoning, or if it goes through the zoning bylaws, a citizen's petition. I didn't think...
I don't think it really makes a heck of a lot of difference who sponsors it. The town warrant is the select board's warrant.
Okay.
So, you, you know, town administrator could sponsor as much as he wants to, but the select board says no, guess what?
Yeah, I just didn't think he could do anything with planning board, since we're an elected group that he has no authority over. Yeah, that was my only...
Should.
You're right.
Shall.
I guess what I was getting at, and I don't care about, I, I'm, my philosophy is fix the problem, not the blame. Is that maybe we should tell him that the correct procedure, if we want to change a bylaw, is to bring it before the planning board, and then refer it, and we can refer it to the bylaw subcommittee for changes.
Is my understanding of the procedure.
You say you want to try to educate that town administrator.
Well, I think it would bring more, wouldn't it, wouldn't it follow and actually show more support as it went through to the select board? If it went that way, and all of a sudden we did have the support, and all of a sudden we said, oh, well, I kind of see the benefit of this, and we have discussion and say, well, this makes sense, let's...
I know it's a little, it's a little piece.
Cause I, I went back, I mean, I got no information on it, all I got was that they wanted to change the amount of licenses per thing, and I, I had a lot of pros and cons that nobody answered any questions for me, so I...
You know, with the question on that, and if I can ask my email?
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to throw that out there.
The question on that is, like, and, and one of the reasons is the people who are renting from me asked him to bring that forward. They want to put a kitchen, and they want to actually take the marijuana that they're growing there, and just move it over to the kitchen and make the products. Otherwise, they're gonna take it, well, it has to be like three feet away or something like that, so they're gonna take it outside the building to put it in the kitchen. I mean, it's crazy, but why not just allow it to be in the same spot? It, it's just a kitchen, alls he gonna do is make the product, use the marijuana to make the product, what they grow, in the kitchen. So I, I mean, I don't understand what the big issue with that was, and I don't know why it was separated to begin with, but I'm gonna hopefully bring that forward, cause they still want to do that.
Well, if they don't, that's what we said, somebody's gonna want to do that. We have five licenses in town. Those five licenses have to be awarded.
There's five growing licenses in town?
Well, there's five total licenses.
It could be, it could be five.
It could be manufacturing, it can be a cultivation, it can be a retail store.
Or five of one, five of the...
Or five of one.
Research.
Research and development, so there's five different types of, there's a total of five licenses within the entire town of Brooklyn.
So the manufacturing is one, and growing is another.
Could be.
And retail.
Could be, could be three of one, two of one, one of another.
Five of five.
You don't know what the purpose was of separating everything?
Yeah, I think that the purpose of that was that when we were working on the, you know, I was the chairman of that committee, and when we were working on that, no one really understood where this business was going, and that's, there was some precedent for that with other bylaws that were being put in place. You know, not, and I agree that it makes more sense to do it. I agree with what you were saying, but at the time, we really didn't understand. It didn't, it didn't...
And that's why I should go back to the bylaw, we have these discussions.
That's a great way to do it, I mean, but, you know, they, they brought it forward, they went through a run on that, I think. Where I was gonna do it, but I, I didn't end up doing it, so I think by the spring meeting, I'll...
If it went back to the bylaw subcommittee, Maryland has a ton of experience on the CCC. If there's been any changes, or anything like that, the subcommittee could research it and make sure, I guess what I'm getting at, the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed, and then we can bring it before the town in, in May, but I just...
Well, these, I mean, just to be devil's advocate on this, there, there are people who are setting up a business at this point in time. I mean, which is not officially a consideration of this board, but it could be. A consideration by the town, and that if that would allow the, to the town administrator to bring it to the selectman, and I think there's a little precedent for that, when, as Norm said, the town administrator or the select board or whatever, there, I don't know, the one, or it works for the other, but there is, you know, there's a connection there.
I just don't, this is my division of power. This, the, the, the planning board has complete, and I'm gonna be arrogant, total control over zoning bylaws. Nobody else in town does except this board, and I really don't want it to start to get where anybody that feels like they can change a zoning bylaw does it. If they want to change something that is already a zoning, that's what the ZBA's been set up for. I just...
And shouldn't the customer be the one to write the petition to change it?
Exactly.
Well, he can't, he doesn't live in town. I have to write it.
So then you should be the one to write it.
I, I will, I will, I'll bring it forward for the spring meeting, but I'll, I'll get it done, hopefully next month.
It was, it just wasn't quick enough for just...
Right, I mean, there was too many questions, and it didn't go through the proper channels, but I believe that, I don't think there's a, if you're growing it and you want to manufacture it, it makes sense to do that in the same spot. But maybe somebody's got some reason why it doesn't, I, I don't know.
I don't disagree with the change, I just want it to follow the proper procedures, all I want, that's all I want.
So it goes through the channel.
Cause I looked over the, the hearing, and I'm like, eh, eh, makes sense to me about what they're trying to do. I just, I just didn't like the way it seemed to be going around the maypole, and that's, that's the tough part I had. That was the only thing that I had issues with. And then I watched a select board meeting, and there were so many questions, I'm like, this ain't going anywhere.
You need a conveyor belt to take it out of the grower and around outdoors and back in.
Yeah, and bring it back in. It's crazy, all right, okay.
All right.
Sorry, guys, it's Leah.
Okay, back to item three.
Is it possible for me to like sit down that end, or am I blocking a camera or something?
Nope.
No.
Camera's way up there.
Okay, thank you. So I gave you this, this is something we put together 10 years ago?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Leah, would you speak up, please?
Can you hear me?
Can't hear.
Don't, 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 don't.
No, you're on.
Oh, that was turned down.
Leah, try again, please.
Can you hear me?
That's better, thank you. Okay, cause she was trying to speak, but we could hear her in the control room. Thank you.
What did you say about speaking?
Hi Leah, how are you?
Hi, guys, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Um, I just wanted to touch, I heard the conversation about the marijuana bylaw thing. I think for us, we had a whole lot of questions, and just what proper channel should it go through? It didn't seem like there were a lot of, um, clear answers, and, you know, originally it was presented it was going to have to go across Main Street, which isn't true, and so we just had some questions and wanted to make sure that planning board had properly vetted it, and that the public had opportunity to weigh in before rushing the whole process. So, um, I can't speak for the whole board, I myself don't necessarily not support it, but I just wanted to have had the time to do it properly.
Yep, so...
Okay.
There you go. So as far as the A and R is concerned, we put this together a while ago, so...
No, I'm sorry to interrupt, you just have to open the hearing first.
Okay.
Continue, continue.
Looking at the hearing. On modification for, uh, state subdivision.
Okay, so, if you look at this, this is Bear Hill 1, Bear Hill 2, and Brittonal Estates, all rolled into one. This is the old way it was approved, where you see Brittonal Estates right now. So if you take Quail Run, and the first, the first set of them, they just moved the lot lines a little bit to, to straighten out a few things. They needed a utility easement. Those, those lots basically stayed the same. Where the changes occurred was on Quail Run, and that's on the second page of, of the, of the A and R that we submitted. So if you'll notice, it goes, lots 27R at the end, then 27A, B, and C. Lot 32 and, excuse me, Lot 33 were eliminated from Quail Run. If you look at the front page, you can see them right at the end. At Quail Run, you can see 32 and 33, they were eliminated. Also, Lot 53 from the subdivision before that was eliminated. And if you look at the very last page, they changed the open space, this is another A and R that needs to be signed, which incorporates Lot 53 into the open space.
Just to, to go back, did you say Lot 53?
Yeah. Yes, Lot 53 is right there. Right at the end, right at the end, right across from where the pump station is on Grizzly Drive. Before Brittonal Estates starts, it's part of Bear Hill 2. If you look at the very front page, you have to look at the front page to see 53. Just before it goes in.
You better tell Julian that the last page you gave us doesn't have 53 on it.
It's not Julian, that's what, it's not supposed to, uh...
Oh, Hannigan, sorry.
It's not supposed to, Tim. It's, it took, it gets rid, it gets rid of 53.
Okay.
Correct, there's, there's a detention pond on it now. So we just incorporated that into the open space and put an easement.
Right there, yeah.
And then we eliminated 32 and 33 at the end of the run, and we added them at the back of the run. So you gotta, well, Lot 27R A is a flag lot, 27B is a regular lot, and 27C is a flag lot. Little confusing, cause there's 427s, but anyways, 32, 33, and 53 were eliminated, those three get added back there. So there's 34 lots now instead of 33, because 53 got sucked into the open space.
But didn't we add one over on Arrowhead, so that'll bring it to a total of 35?
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with, that's, this is, that's not an open space plan. This is, this is going by lot count, and what Carl's question was, was if you had 33 lots before, and that was the lot, the lot count that was approved, how do you end up with 34? So what, what we did was we eliminated Lot 53 out of Bear Hill 2, Bear Hill 1, and we added it into Brittonal. That's how we come up with 34 lots. Arrowhead was a, was an A and R that was done, but those are regular zoning lots.
53 is actually Brittonal Estates.
Okay, there you go.
So, that's the only thing I was gonna say, and, and maybe I'm wrong, Norm, but I'm almost positive that 51, 2, and 3, if I remember right, were, when we looked at the, I think Dick and I looked at this, it was Brittonal. 21 and 22 was the end of Bear Hill 1.
Yeah.
So I, I'm pretty sure that those three lots that we're talking about were actually part of the Brittonal Estates plan, if I'm not mistaken.
They're on that, when we, when we did make the road go straight through, they, they added.
Yeah, I mean, I know they got built as part of the...
And we transferred them on, by deed, into Bear Hill Estates LLC. So we took them out of Brittonal, and we transferred them into, into Bear Hill Estates LLC.
Dave, you want to transfer my next pen, will you?
I do, no, I got it. Pen or pencil, which one?
Pen would be better.
You got it.
And I apologize for not remembering this, but what were we talking about? Carl made a comment about lot count being less in Brittonal Estates, and we agree that we took one out of Bear Hill 2, or added one in Bear Hill 2, and that made up for the difference in Brittonal Estates?
Just the opposite.
Okay.
We added one in Brittonal and took one out of Bear Hill 1.
Okay.
53's gone now, it's a detention pond. And it's part of the open space on this plan, the very last page. It's part of the open space.
But I thought the plus and minus was coming out of, of Bear Hill 2, not out of...
Bear Hill 2 has nothing to do with this. It's Bear Hill 1 and Brittonal. So Brittonal, the lot count that was approved originally was 33, and if you look on this plan right here, there's 33 lots in Brittonal Estates, at the end of Quail Run's lot number 33. What we did was we took out 32, 33, and 53, and we added 27A, B, and C to the end of Quail Run.
All right, so now you're gonna take it back and, and properly put in a easement?
Easement to the, yes.
Okay. I guess so.
I thought this plan depicted how it got, got done better than any of the elements.
My question, Norm, is what does this do to a subdivision? Cause of the changes in lots and stuff like that, is that considered minor, major? Cause of the changes in lots and stuff like that, is that considered minor, major?
A and Rs are perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
And for this part, I don't see a real problem. I don't know. To me, the question is dollars.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we figure out what's gonna be the price? And I don't know, I've just been kinda going through while you've been talking here. As far as, it appears the Quail Run is a significant change.
Right.
And I see twenty-three R, no change. Twenty-four R, no change from the original plan. Twenty-five R, no change. Twenty-six R, no change. Twenty-seven R, no change. Twenty-seven A definitely is a change. Twenty-seven B definitely is. Twenty-seven C is. Twenty-eight R. R changes.
But twenty-six R and twenty-seven R have lot line changes. Is that gonna, does that matter? Cause the lot lines have changed and those two pieces of property. Yeah, so.
So those, those are guesses.
But so does three A and five A, but I mean, those are minor changes.
So you eliminated three lots and then changed on six lots.
Well, yeah.
Technically, you know what I mean? So you took those two out, one, two, three out, and then there was changes on six lots.
So it looks like, yeah, that's it, Kevin. I got six lots. This change is total.
Also, if I could just jump there real quick. So on the A and R plans that were in there, there's a note at the bottom of the page, each page. That note describes the changes also. It's down there at the bottom.
Yeah, that's right, right next to where the stamp would go.
If you're looking for more information.
So what's the question about the price that's?
It's so much a lot.
For the A and R changes.
The base price is three hundred plus fifty dollars per lot. And the words, the language that we have, that fifty dollars is per lot created or changed. And, you know, I guess, you know, technically.
So it's either six times fifty or nine times fifty.
The, the, the open space is also changed.
That's the C one, yeah, cause it calls it out in the notes down there.
Personally, I think you'd be happy with going with the six lots. That's just my opinion. Now, that, that's my opinion. If anybody else has other questions regarding any of the changes.
See, I count nine, but I'm not sure because.
If you eliminate three, you add three. I don't know, I guess it could be a, you know, I hate to charge you to, cause you're adding to a lot. Like, that's a good thing. You're adding space to a house lot. Like, that's not a bad thing. So some of these smaller ones, I think that would be.
Yeah, but it's, if it was part of the subdivision, it wouldn't be an issue, but because they're being A and R'd, that's a whole different scenario.
They have a fee structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't.
Sure you don't wanna go back to subdivisions?
If, if the board recalls that, there's notes on page one and two and three. So there's lots one A to five A, and there's lots twenty-three to twenty-eight R, plus C one.
Yeah. So when I brought this into, I gave it to Damien, I gave her a blank check. She goes, oh no, don't leave that yet. So I took it back to the office.
She's leaving and she's like, I'm taking this.
So I took it back to the office and I forgot it.
Well, Cle, thank you for my going away present. Hey honey, we got a new caddy.
Not quite.
David, in your, in your opinion, would some of these other changes all constitute? I mean, it's all, it's not about the fifty bucks. It's all about precedent.
I don't care.
Is that, is that a, I mean, I, I don't think you're gonna sit here and it's two hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty cause tell me what the number is and let's get it done, but then it's the precedent.
I just didn't know how to figure it.
Our best interpretation.
Right.
And sometimes it can be more than one interpretation.
I mean, Norm, I would be okay with seven, cause it's the six, and then taking the other three lots and turning them into open space as one, as one, one change. That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, I'm good with that. So six fifty. Okay, I'll bring that up tomorrow, Dave. I forgot my check.
Does that make sense to you, Dave? Nope.
The only other question I had, Norm, is I'm looking at this original one from ten years ago where it's got the drainage easement that sort of takes the back of thirty and twenty-nine. Then I'm looking at this new easement that basically goes through the entire center lot of twenty-nine. And, and that's got me, just from my Bryce Lemon experience, I'm really worried.
Why? Cause of the detention pond?
Yeah.
That's just in order to run the pipes down, Tim. We, we had, we had to bring it down.
Okay, is that what it is? It's not actually physically a drain?
The pond is in the back of those lots.
Okay, all right. I just, I, I see, when I see easement and through a center of a property, I just think of, of that gentleman's property at the end of the, in Bryce Lemon where the water all ponded in. I'm like, I don't wanna go through that again. So that, that easement is basically just set up to bring piping.
And then the detention pond's way in the back.
Okay, I'm good. That's all I need for an explanation. Thank you, sir.
So you'd have to crown the house.
Whole road, yeah.
Or they have piping under their foundation.
Can't do that. Lawyers and building inspectors crown on that. Yeah.
Okay, are we settled on the A and Rs?
Yeah, I think so. But I wanted to give you this. This kinda gives you an idea of what, this is the old thing that was then. I thought it would be a good way to show what you know.
So the, the, the part, so we're looking at this, the north part of like Grizzly Drive North, which would be page two. Were those already done before? You know, if you look at these.
No, that's part of this A and R.
That's all part of the same.
Yeah. So we did it on three sheets, thought it'd be easier.
So they would change it there too, right?
But that's, didn't they count? I think they counted those. Three there and then three there.
I just wanna make sure that I'm fully understand, if you look at the second page.
It's the six at the end of Quail Run.
Correct. And now look at page number two.
I thought you included three, four, and five or whatever. Three has a little change to it.
Oh, I didn't see that. Oh, man.
Thanks, Kevin.
Sorry.
I didn't see it either.
I believe it's twelve now.
So you don't wanna get it on this one, Dave? All we see is that, you look at the A and Rs, the A and R has notes, and the notes describe what's happening with these plans. The notes indicate what lots are affected.
Oh, you're right, twenty-three.
And there's three total sheets and there's two separate sets of notes.
Eight.
Oh my god.
So there is nine. So if I counted the notes, two, four, six, eight. Ten, you're right, Norm. Yeah.
I got twelve.
Two, four, six, eight.
That's killing me. Get outta here.
Well, the only reason I say ten is I'm saying that parcel C one is the thirty-three, thirty-two, and fifty-three. So I'm trying to take three of those and just make it into one, since it's going to open space. C one's the open space. Oh, I didn't see these. Oh, man. There's ten, twelve.
I've got five, too.
Five on which page? Which one?
Five on page two, six on page three.
You say five, I got one, two, three, four. Isn't five A changed also?
Yep.
So there's five on the second page, and I say.
Five, so it's, it's.
My opinion is ten on the second page, a total of fifteen.
Ten, ten on the second page?
Yeah, in the notes, count them up. Two notes, every, at the notes, it says there's ten down there are re-division.
Some of those changes is so miniscule though. If you're gonna hammer me for ten or twelve, shit, I suppose fifteen, okay.
I count it, I mean, as I look at this and the. What was the, what was the, lots one, two, three, four, five A are re-division of lots one through five. That's five.
Hey, but we've gotta do with, if, like again, if this was a subdivision, I wouldn't be having this big of an issue, but it's an A and R, and anybody else that comes in and re-divides lots up, we're charging them. I'm just. Yeah, I just, that's why I come up, I know they're miniscule, but it's.
It's literally how you come up with fifteen.
Well, I guess five on the first one. Everybody agree to that one on the second page?
Yeah.
And then the second one, it says in the notes, lots twenty-three R through twenty-eight R and parcel C one are re-divisions of lots twenty-three through twenty-eight and parcel, which means there's changes.
If I, if I take a look.
Twenty-four. See that dotted line there?
Tiny dotted line.
Yeah, you're right.
We can leave that out. We can leave that one out.
I'm just, if, if we sign these with the notes at the bottom, I'm just saying that.
No notes. I'm gonna talk to Hannigan. Be more elusive like Julian.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying, detective, I guess what I'm saying is anything with an R on it, R on it is a change.
That's true. That is true. Some of them are very miniscule.
Twenty-three R. I don't, I don't see any change.
No, they moved the lot line from twenty-four.
Twenty-four R.
Yeah.
So it by default changed that one.
Yeah.
So if you read the notes, so now it's not on me, it's over to him, right? You said, hey, thanks Kevin. Now it's thanks Kevin.
Well, you got five. You had five.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine.
He added four.
So it's here fifteen, do I hear?
And the reason I'm doing fifteen, the reason I'm doing fifteen is I'm being generous and say thirty-two, thirty-three, and fifty-three are part of the C one chain, so we don't, even though they're being deleted, they're added into open space, and I don't think we should, from an A and R perspective, hit them with three lots there just with one, because it's adding to one big open space as opposed to. That's why I stick with fifteen. Yeah, instead of an extra hundred and fifty, I'm only fronting. That's why I come up with the fifteen. It's based off the notes.
Have you been over there? There's pretty nice lots over there. Looks pretty nice.
Yeah, I've just got, I've got one, one compadre of mine that's looking for a five acre lot, and I told him it's gonna be tough in Rutland.
I've got a whole bunch. It just got approved. I just got special permits the other day.
Oh, on Brittonal? Yeah, that's not gonna happen. I've already told him.
He doesn't want?
I told him, yeah, stay away from Brittonal. I have that road until they ever pave it, I wouldn't. God bless you, Norm, for living on it, but I couldn't live on it.
I have one five acre lot on Glenwood Place left.
You do.
Lot ten.
All right, let me write that down.
I was over looking at Brittonal, they were doing the second wetting cross. Yeah, I just couldn't help it. I'm fascinated watching this stuff. I must've sat over at the end of Grizzly for about twenty-five minutes. It looked like total chaos.
Oh, with those trucks?
No.
Oh.
They were putting in the retaining wall.
Oh, we get to that, we gotta talk.
And they had two excavators, a loader and a dump truck, and I forget what else, running. And I swear, all they were doing was just going back and forth and back. They weren't doing that damn thing. One day I was sitting, one of the yesterday's, and raise the bucket up, put it back down again. Detach the bucket, put the chain on it, bring it up over here, go, go back down, drop up.
All about billable hours.
Yeah, I was seeing the same thing.
At least they're not billing me by the hour.
I wanna read the fine print.
Hopefully you got a contract with them and it's, it's up to them to make money.
All right, so.
Are we settled at fifteen?
God, I hope so. Can we, can we sign these quick?
Yeah, so it was, it was ten, five, ten, and then.
That's it.
You let the bat go.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, seven fifty plus the three hundred, right?
So one thousand fifty.
One thousand fifty.
Now can I make my request after we get all these blessed that we get a updated set of plans for all, for Brittonal Estates?
You have one.
With all these changes?
Yes.
Okay, good. A complete set that's got all of the.
That's the.
That's why we're here.
That's why they have, yeah, that's the set right there, from this one here and the whole board.
Okay, that's good.
This is, so what's, what's happening here in this A and R is gonna match up with what was submitted for the May, uh, December eleven, twenty twenty revision.
Okay.
Exactly.
And that was one of the comments pulled out by Quinn when he reviewed the prior two thousand seven, prior two thousand and ten versus the twenty twenty.
See that? The punch.
What are we gonna have in A and R that's dated twenty twenty-one in a set of plans that says twenty twenty on it?
You do that all the time.
All right.
I think what we would do is look for the full size and just add it to this packet, just appended to it.
Yeah.
You didn't, you didn't A and R on Bear Hill with three quarters of houses already built.
Yeah.
It just doesn't work in any industry I've ever worked in.
Doesn't this one.
Yeah, because you're looking for, you're looking to have a revision date of these particular sheets that correspond.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Yeah, I just, I wanna get, I want, so when Carl looks at something, Carl goes, all right, these six sheets are updated as of.
Right, and what we've done before is, he comes up with his.
My staple gun and I just remove.
I'm fine with that. That's all I wanna do, cause I want.
That's what we've done before, for trackability.
That's all I'm looking for. I want Carl to have ease. When we go to do some of these phases and he's gotta review stuff, I want it easy for Carl, so we don't have to go back through the files and try to find everything.
Those plans incorporate all those changes, so that, that's.
Okay, all right, that's all, that's all I'm doing.
Just swap off the plans.
If you, if I bring in the A and Rs, it's, it's not gonna accomplish anything except for add a date to it.
Add a date, yeah.
I mean, so I could just add them to the back if you'd like.
Well, from the standpoint of Carl's perspective, he can look and see that on, what's today, November eighth, ninth of, of twenty twenty-one, those drawings were signed off on and blessed in that packet, even though it says twenty twenty. So he doesn't have to say, okay, whoa, when was this change made as part of the A and Rs? And that's all I'm trying to do is make sure he has a complete packet with dates.
So if I could answer to that, what, what we're changing right now, what's called the registry plans. These are the ones that get recorded at the registry. There's the first part of the, the plans over there would be recorded at the registry. The second set are site plans, and then there's profiles in the detail pages, right?
Yes.
So the site plans match what we just did for the A and R. And, and, and so do the profiles, and so do the details, because he did this and he forgot to do the A and R. So the A and R came afterwards, cause Kyle picked up on it. He says, hey, what the hell's going on here? These don't match.
So fifty-three, thirty-two, and, and thirty-three were already eliminated?
Thirty-one were already gone, yeah, on those plans. But they weren't gone at the registry, so when Kyle looked it up, he came up with the plan, you know, this part. And, and what, what Hannigan had done, he'd already changed it. Cause he made that detention pond, cause like you said, it was part of Brittonal. So he made the detention pond ten years ago. And that's why it eliminated that, and he changed all the other lots, but he never followed through and, and came in with the A and R. So all those plans are exactly what Carl would be looking at.
Do, do the plans right now, the twenty twenty plans, have all these notes on it with all the changes?
Well, not, not the, not the registry plans, they don't.
Okay.
But the site plans and the profiles and the detail pages all match these now. So what the, the stuff that Kyle really needs, like what's going in the street and the grades and all that, they're all, they're all matched. I'll, I'll add them to the back, so he'll see them.
I'm fine with that. As long as they're shown as revisions to the plan, that's all I wanna do.
I got you. I know what you're saying.
So the, the dates with the revisions. So the, the dates with the revisions match up with changes, so if Carl's got questions, I don't wanna, you build this, and in two years, we're going through the approvals for the select board to give you the roads, and we get this ninety-nine page, I don't wanna go through that ever again, what we did on Bear Hill one.
Neither.
So that's the only reason I'm asking, just to have some traceability, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Gotcha.
All right.
Can you show me on here exactly which one to switch, cuz I've never got it clear in my head.
So Bear Hill right ends right here.
Okay.
Where's fifty-two, right, Bear Hill ends right here. And it starts right here.
Do we need...
Bear Hill two, from here to here, and then Britnell goes from here.
The total A and R package, or do we need to name all of those individual lots?
I think if you reference the title block for each of the three pages, it indicates that it's the three sheets, one, two, and three of a plan dated something such, that that will be adequate for the purposes of a motion.
All right, Dave, I'm fine with that, so I guess...
Now, the, the question is, can we entertain a motion to endorse the A and Rs within the public hearing?
Oh, we gotta close it, don't we?
I, I, I don't think it's problematical, the A and R stands on its own with its own separate deadlines. I just put it in with the hearing for a matter of convenience, because the others were related, but the A and R has its own time, timeline for action, so I don't believe it's dependent on the hearing per se. What's dependent on the hearing is the other stuff we'll be talking about in a moment.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should wait and get through all the hearing, and then...
No.
All right, well, I, I guess...
For what it is, isn't that kind of agree, I think we can, we can have a motion to just endorse the A and R.
I guess I'll make a motion to endorse, um, the A and R for Britnell Estates. Trying to find a title here. As shown on sheet one through three of the Hannigan engineering plan dated, uh, November second, twenty twenty-one.
All of these sheets gotta get recorded, all of them.
Yeah, that's why I have the one through three, so that'll be all three for the motion.
Second half. Is there any further discussion? And we read on the key, so, wrote it down.
Ten thousand fifty dollars. Yeah, Dave, we're, we're helping you out for your, uh, next year's, next year's, uh, budgeting.
Hearing, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We got to endorse those now or later.
I gotta bring you a check so I can pick them up tomorrow if you wanna wait.
That's mad at me.
Okay, so we're back to the regular public hearing on this, on this occasion.
So, want me to start?
Yeah.
At the last hearing, you asked me, there was three things you asked me to do. One, for the RCP to HDP E-pipe, you asked me, cuz Kyle asked for it, to submit, um...
Waiver?
Well, a waiver I asked for, but he knew, he wanted, um, uh, cut sheets to make sure that they, you know, the HDP could take the same amount of stress as the RCP and all that. I submitted that all to Kyle, he sent back an email, copy Dave and Norm on ten eighteen, saying that that satisfied that comment. So I submitted all the information he was looking for, there's an email, I can make a copy of it if you want, but, um, he, he, uh...
Dave, do you have that one?
From ten eighteen, Dave, it was...
I'm not sure it's in the package, but it does, it's familiar.
All I wanted to do was make sure it got into the hearing, it's the only thing.
It's gonna reference?
Yeah, cuz I don't see it. I think we just need to make it into meeting minutes.
That's, that's fine.
He said that satisfies this comment, is what I heard, that's it.
Just for point of reference, where are you on this?
First bullet?
First bullet.
October fifth one.
First page, bottom of the page, where he says, this office the first of the board down the bottom.
Yeah.
That comment right there. I, I had asked for a waiver, and he asked me to confirm that the plastic pipe material was suitable class five, RCP, where previously proposed, I submitted all that stuff to him, he was fine with it.
I'm okay, as long as we get the email and it's...
I, I can send you.
No, no, I don't need it, as long as Dave has it and it's in the minutes, Cle, I'm fine.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we, again, dot the i's and cross the t's, so...
Yep, and then, um, the second bullet was the lot count that we just went through, and Norm asked that I get the, um, A and R plans ready before, for that, so I did that, and, um, that we just settled that one.
Then the next bullet.
That's all.
The roadway.
Those were, that was, as far, at the last hearing, that was, everybody was satisfied with that.
See how we're on here?
This is the bullet right here?
Yeah.
Number of culverts in the roadway cross section.
And maybe this is for Cle and Dave, Norm, is that, I, I talked to the fire chief, he was no issues, it's, it's the DPW for the, the plowing and everything, is, did, has somebody talked to Director Buckley that it's okay?
Well, no, but, um, if you, if you read, um, uh, his comment...
He wants us to seek input from the fire chief and DPW.
Yeah, but he says also that the proposed plan identifies that the pavement width at the wetland crossing is supposed to be twenty feet, with transitions at twenty-four to either side. A twenty foot width is consistent with the width required for residential sub-collector specified in the subdivision rules and regulations. So it meets the rules and regs, it's, it's not anything that's bad. Um, I could, and, and the fire chief, when I talked to Kyle, he was more concerned with the fire chief being worried about it. I mean, if, if he can plow the side roads and all these private roads, I'm sure, if you ask Joe, I, I don't think he'd have a problem with it, but, you know.
Again, I, I didn't get a chance to talk to Joe today, I just got to the fire chief, is all I could get, and Seth said he was fine, cuz usually, cuz I was worried about a, the big pumper truck, that, that's probably the whitest one he's got, the, with the, uh, water tanks, but I wasn't sure about Joe, and I, I didn't get a chance to call him today, cuz I got pulled into other things, so I didn't know if anybody else on the board did, or Dave, did you get any input from...
I don't know that we necessarily side input there, although it's twenty feet, how many roads in this town are twenty feet, which we plowed?
Plus, he says may wish, it doesn't say should, it says may.
Yeah, I just, I'm a stickler for making sure we have communication with all the departments.
Well, that, I, the last time we met, that was okay, so I didn't do anything with it.
Yeah, that was my understanding, too, that that, the waiver was granted, and that there's no further issue.
Right.
Also, the waiver...
Because it is, it's sort of that a waiver has been requested to deviate from the standard rule.
Yeah, it doesn't say it's been...
So wait, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, so the board just looked at this matter on the twelfth of October, they went through this list, uh, for October fifth, I have my, my marked up version, and certainly these items were reviewed already.
Right.
And waivers were granted already, I think we're just kinda going through them one more time and capturing what actually happened, with the follow-up for the specific items, that's my understanding of it, if I'm not correct.
They agreed to the waiver, but they didn't formally vote it, I guess, is the...
Right, but no other further action was...
Right, no other, you didn't, they didn't, yeah, you didn't, you, you said you were happy with that, at that time, right.
Okay.
And then, um, the next one, um, is the, uh, about the spacing in the catch basins.
Yeah.
I, I sent that over to Joe on the fourteenth of October.
Okay.
Okay, Dave's gonna see it.
Yeah, I have further information on that. Wait, did we pass the lot configuration open space have been revised, just to verify that that's okay? It says, if we're gonna go from an item, we just go through them one more time. I, I have okay on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the four hundred eighty-three feet from two fifty. Um, I had a conversation with Joe Buckley today on this, and we, um, contacted Kevin Quinn, and had a conference call, Carl Holdgren unfortunately is on vacation. Without more knowledge from Carl, Kevin was conservative and thought that if the board needed more information, that he could provide that with a conference call to Joe Buckley after Carl gets back from his vacation. But he didn't have a ready answer at this point, whether or not that's in, whether or not it's okay as is, or whether or not something else needs to be done to it. I guess some of the issues has to do with the overall grade of that section, and the ability for water to sheet flow over, cuz I guess it's relatively flat there, like a six percent slope. It was an issue of whether some berms may be necessary to keep it from sheet flowing, um, but if you wanted a better answer...
Jumped out of my skin.
I think that's a line of service, if the board's comfortable making its own decision, that's fine, if the board needs more information, it's not available at this point because of scheduling and so forth.
Here's where we left it, um, at least what you told me is, and I wrote it down, get a letter from Joe Buckley and make sure he's okay with it. And I sent this off to Joe and asked that very question, I said, and for some reason, the email that I sent on the fourteenth, he never received.
Right, so I followed up with him today, and he wasn't comfortable making that determination without more information from the consulting engineer. Unless the board understands this sufficiently to, to use his own judgment.
I want Carl's, oh man.
I mean, yeah, you know, if, if, if we're ten feet, you know, one way or another...
That's two hundred and thirty, it's almost double.
Yeah, one, one, one hundred, one hundred and eighty-three from two hundred and fifty.
And to the favor of this, Joe observed that there's not a lot of house lots nearby with driveways that might be affected. The concern seems mainly to be where would the stormwater go for the, for any storm event? And how would that be handled as a practical matter, given the distance between the catch basins?
So if, if this is where I think it is, um, station twenty-five plus zero zero is just after the pump station. So station twenty-seven, I, I believe goes towards Britnell, oh. So what he's saying is, and, and, and a lot of times you can begin and, begin and end drainage for, from certain areas, you don't, it's not always all connected throughout the site. So you don't, you just, you don't have to have, you don't have to have it all connected. So what he did was, he let it sheet flow to those different, uh, catch basins, and I, you guys probably aren't comfortable making the decision, but I, that's why I wanted to sit down with Joe and Oliver, with the site plan.
Sounds like Joe, sounds like Cle, Joe, you and Carl need to sit down.
Yeah, yeah.
And possibly handle it.
Yeah, and then have Dave there just for, on our side, our rep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, when I sent it to him on the fourteenth, I figured if he had a problem with it, he would call me, but I, I spoke to him yesterday, and he said, jeez, I never got it, so I sent it to him again, and he said, and I checked with him this time, and he said he got it, but he didn't have enough time to, to go through it, so...
That's my opinion on that, that is just, have Cle, Joe, Carl, and Dave just sit down and hammer this out, and if Car, and if Joe's okay with the sheet flow, um, solution, and Carl's fine with it, then, um, me personally, I'm fine with it, cuz that's what we're paying them to do.
My only problem is I, they, we're gonna be installing those catch basins pretty quick, so...
Well, you're gonna have to at least wait two weeks, minimum.
I know, I'm not here on the twentieth, I'm going away Thanksgiving, but that's all right. I, I, I mean, I, I understand that you're not comfortable making the decision, I know why, I mean, I'm not pushing to make a decision, I'm just trying to, um... Well, maybe...
Who you got that you could send on the twenty-third is?
Oh, I could...
Send George, he like George. He charges only five hundred an hour.
Yeah, I know. And I'm like, psych guy come Tommy, or, or one of the guys from Hannigan's could come. I'll, I'll get Hannigan to call, uh, Joe, and maybe he can, he can fill Kevin Quinn in, you know, maybe they can...
I, I've, I've got a feeling from what I heard from Dave until Carl's back, Kevin's not gonna, he won't see once Carl's input, so...
I think probably what should happen, or what, if you consider this as the approach, would be that Joe, Carl, and Hannigan have a conference call to talk about this issue in terms of whether it's, it's okay as is, or whether or not any, any, any other conditions have to be made on the plan to prevent what they think might be the worst case scenario, uh, using their plans or reference and their, their expertise, that was what sense I got from Kevin today.
So I haven't asked for a waiver. So it's not really, you don't have to act on it, it could be a, a whole mother... A whole, a whole, I, I didn't know that this was in there, and I didn't know that it needed a waiver.
Well, I think, if I could, if you remember, I think the board determined that it was a field change depending on what Joe Buckley thought about it, given the change in the regulations.
Oh, good, so this, this doesn't have to be bothered with the hearing then?
Right.
No, I, I would consider this just a field change.
Yeah, okay, perfect, yeah.
I mean, that's my opinion.
That's great, I, I, I forgot that, yeah, yeah.
I don't...
So that, that... Part of it is that this change was not included in the first of the public hearing.
Oh.
Okay, so, that's what I was saying. We don't have to have an alternative way of...
Well, field changes, that, that's an alternative means to the drawing, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
What's the next one?
That was it?
Oh, no, there's a, there's one in here that I saw that had, wasn't it a bold, or maybe it's on a different...
Ah, that was another subdivision.
No, 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 Carl made an exclusive comment, it's in here somewhere, or maybe I read it in an email.
All the rest of these say no further comment.
Oh, where the heck is it? All right, I, I'll just blurt it out, and Dave, you can tell me if I, oh, here it is. Maybe it was maple.
It is recommended that the developer provide a plan of drywall insulation in the lot?
But I thought drywall, you guys weren't gonna do drywall.
We do, uh, co, uh, cortex now.
Here it is, Britnell, there's one on October twenty-ninth, do we need to wait till we get to that, so it's not part of the hearing?
What is it?
It's basically the thing we went through on Bryce Lemon, we've really gotta make sure that structural engineers squares away that.
Oh, no, he, he's already spoken to Kyle.
Okay.
That's all set, yeah, yeah, he's, Kyle's happy, the structural guy's happy, everybody's happy.
It was in the later ones that I saw it, and Carl actually took pictures and made it bold, saying that he wanted to make sure we didn't go, he didn't say it, but we went through it Bryce Lemon, so...
You talked about the engineering reports.
Yeah, and the engineering report on the twenty-ninth, yeah, if that's not part of the hearing, we can wait, I just...
It's really hard for me.
Okay.
So that means you can close this hearing and vote on the waivers, right? Cuz they're all set, right?
Do you have a order, a copy of the order of conditions from Concom?
Yes, no, not from Concom, there was a request to get the decision for Britnell Estates regarding, in crossing...
The, the trail, yes, and, and that, you've seen that, you know, with the configurations and all that, that's by the...
Who's making food?
Somebody cooking?
Yeah.
What was the issue again, I can make reference to the decision and then...
No, it, it just in here, it said no further comment, but it was on the level spreader, Conservation Commission, they reviewed the update plans, including the level spreader, and it issued an order of conditions.
Right. With the new plans, they made me submit new, for a new order of conditions, I had one for before, and they extended them, but then they gave me a new order with that.
Just so long as we have a copy of it for our records, is what I'm getting at.
Oh, sure, it's on record, Dick, but I'll, I'll, I could copy it and, and...
Just make sure...
Download and send it to you if you would like.
I guess.
Yeah.
I think Norm, and I know nobody wants to hear this, but I think we should extend the hearing until we get that dot from Carl and Hannigan and Joe, I know it's only one, but...
But it's a field change.
It's not, it's not...
But we don't have a definitive answer on the narrowing of the roadway as far as comments for buyer, Joe, police.
You didn't ask for it. You, you were satisfied, the last time we were here, you were satisfied...
I wasn't.
With that comment, um, but, uh, he, he spoke to the fire, Seth, I spoke to Seth.
I did speak to Seth today, so I, I can say from a board member that I talked to the fire chief, and I specifically asked him about in Britnell Estates with the road going to twenty feet, do you have a problem with any of your trucks are getting through or turn around, and Seth said no, so...
Like we just, I mean, staff doesn't have that comment, which can be conveyed to the rest of the board, so I... It was my understanding that that was not required information, but now that's been brought to the table, I guess it should find its way to all the members, shouldn't it?
Well, and that's gonna be an email request to...
As I say, do we need, do we need something formal? As I say, do we need, do we need something formal?
It says may wish, you don't need anything formal. It's, it's, a twenty-foot width is consistent with the width requirement for a sub collector specified in the subject of rules and regs, so it's, it's fine. It's in the rules and regs.
It's not eighteen feet?
No. And it's only for a short little swath.
Now, what I'm just looking for is, is there anything else, or, you know, what other things it would be a cause for us to continue the public hearing?
Nothing. I hope.
How's he tying in, you know, getting to the rail trail?
Well, that's a good question.
That requires an eighty-one X, I don't need to come to the planning board for that. Eighty-one X doesn't need planning board approval to be required, it's just an easement plan. I can put one on.
An easement over somebody's property?
Well, between the lot lines.
Between the lot lines.
Yeah, well, on the inside, you know. Can you even make it on the, where that drainage easement already comes down, you can make that easement part of that?
Because there's, you know, they got, in our subdivision, that says how wide it has to be, you know, that, so...
Isn't it already done though, Dick?
No.
I don't think so.
No, it isn't.
Is it new?
No.
Because you, you wanted it back then, I thought we did it back then.
Way the heck back.
I thought we did it.
No.
Let me ask Norm on page three or four, those last two bullets, and again, I don't remember seeing those when I reviewed the video being covered. The drywells like Dick brought up, it says, there's no, no further comment there. It just says, if, it is recommended that the developer provide a plan of travel installation on the lots in order to identify potential issues prior to lot development. But it doesn't say after that, no further comment. Now, you guys might have been this October twelfth, come up with a solution for that.
Well, I just have okay, that the board didn't take action one way or the other on it.
But it doesn't, lots really don't pertain to, well, I mean, you, I got, down Bryce Estates, there's infiltrators on every lot, outside of phase one. Every, every lot has infiltrators.
It's not, it's not in the roadways, not connected.
It's not part of the safety of the ways, it's, it's, we have to put them in, but we do infiltrators now, we're not drywells.
Okay.
It's not part of our regulations.
Basically...
So, is the answer to this is, there's no drywells in Brittenall Estates?
If there's anything at all for, what they're trying to do is, they're trying to get the amount of infiltration necessary for that amount of water that comes off, you know, they calculate it by roof, driveway, and so forth on the lot. And plus, sometimes you have to do that infiltrating to meet what DEP standards are for stormwater management for the whole subdivision. You don't have enough infiltration in the, in the catch, in the detention ponds, then you have to get infiltration on the lots. But that's part of the stormwater management plan, really doesn't pertain to planning board. But I will tell you that if, if they're required, they're not gonna be drywells, it's gonna be those, I call them septic systems for drainage, COTEX infiltrators.
Because I read this, it says Hannigan Engineering Inc. has indicated that drywells will, not may, will still be installed for individual house lots.
Guess what? Okay, Hannigan's not right.
Having the okay there, again, I apologize, I wasn't here on the twelfth, I'm not buying it.
I don't, those things are ridiculous, any, they think about this, right?
I agree.
You take the gutters, and you blast them into this, this small area for infiltration, and, and the driveways aren't supposed to run into the road anymore, they're supposed to, I mean, they're supposed to run down the hill and then be cleaned by the grass. I mean, all of this stuff is crazy. I mean, what they, I mean, the stuff you gotta do in Shrewsbury, you get a builder permit now, you have to show them wherever all infiltration's gonna happen, you have to design it. It's like, it's like a septic system for drainage, it's crazy.
Well, Carl brought the comment, that's the only reason why I'm sort of focusing on this and...
But it's not due to subdivision approval, it doesn't have anything to do with the subdivision.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
That's my big thing, you know.
Then what about the next one? It says, after experiences with driveway number six on Arrowhead Way in Bear Hill, the board should be aware that existing driveway is currently existing on Brittenall Drive is going to be tied to the new Grizzly Drive. The board might develop to clarify how the drive will be tied in. And there's nothing, it just says Hannigan has indicated that they're understanding developer has reviewed this with the board. Okay, I don't remember it, but that's okay. The board may wish to have the developer provide additional information clarification to the proposed driveway. And then there's nothing after that, like I would expect to see no further comment or anything like that.
There hasn't been any, she hasn't said anything to us since right at the beginning when we were actually working in front of her driveway. Honestly, I mean, that, what happened with those other people should never have happened, they, they went looney.
I get it, I agree with you.
But, you know, and that's all gone, by the way, by now. I'm gonna fix their driveway, and they're gonna be happy.
I'm just saying, it's a comment in this report, and what, is that got an okay next to it?
It has an okay next to it because the board didn't feel that they needed to take action one way or the other on it.
Okay, I'm good, I just wanted to ask, because I...
Something else I need to clarify on it.
If, if I don't see a defer board or board recommended on these reports, I sort of ask questions. All right, good enough.
So, Dick, to your point, are you looking to have that easement shown on the plan?
Yes.
It is referenced as a condition that's been discussed, so...
In case any of you wanted us to see it, he has a copy of it.
Yeah. I, I guess, among other things, just looking at this new lot configuration, I'm just kinda curious where that easement might possibly be.
You just mentioned... I can put it between any two lots, but I would probably put it at the end of, where, the rail trail's way up in this corner, right?
Yeah, which one are you...
Up, off the end of Bear Farm Drive, it's up in that corner, or is it down, where, where is it?
You go to out the quail run, let's put it this way. The smallest area to get across is right here. So, you gotta go downhill off a quail run, somehow you gotta get down here, and then over to the rail trail.
Well, so the open space is open space, they can, they can travel through that anytime.
That's right.
So, I can just come down one of those lots on, on Quail Run?
Yeah.
And then, I mean, I could come down with the drainage easement, would be the easiest way, the new, the new one.
Yeah, the one you were showing here.
And then you can walk over to get to the rail, that's a long way from there though, Dick. Where is it, on the other side of the Molton Pond? Does it, how does it, where does it go?
Oh, here it is, look at this, look at this guy right here, the, the, the locust map shows the rail trail. So, the rail trail is just south of the open space.
That's all, it's not even, it isn't even about my property, you can't get there from my property, can you?
Don't you remember what I said to you when we were out there, physically out there?
I remember being out there with you, yeah.
Okay, I says, you pull these last two lots off of the, and you put two state lots in, and put a long driveway out there, and use that as the way to get out. Plus, then you'd have two five-acre state lots that somebody was looking, somebody was looking for a state lot.
Yeah, that'll be Mr...
But the plan doesn't connect to the rail trail.
It butts up against the green...
Originally, it did. And then you got rid of the property to a Grenier, and Grenier got rid of it to Colleen for Watchus and Greenways.
I never sold the property to any Grenier. It wasn't me, might have been Freddie Warren. Because he owned it, he owned the land next to me.
There was another small piece, but it wasn't Freddie Warren, it was somebody else, like that went to Watchus and Greenways also.
I'd probably do an easement between twenty-eight R and twenty-seven C, and run it down across that little, like Dick was saying, run across that little piece down here, run it to the edge of the property, and then tell Watchus and Greenway they gotta finish it.
Right.
That's what I'd do.
Yeah, I mean, but I could only go to the edge of my property.
Well, that's what I meant, go to the edge of your property, and then I guess the board or somebody can tell Watchus and Greenway, they can go from there.
Already did, and she says if they have to, they will, but...
That's, that's how I would do it, that would, that would keep things clean, you won't leave your property, and you get the, what Dick's looking for. Because you're, you're talking about crossing right here, Dick, right, right down here at that little stream area?
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you came off twenty-seven, right there, that little piece of pro, or no, actually, it's, it's down here now, with the new one, and then just come down across it and go to the edge, and then let Watchus and Greenway finish it, Cleve, and be done with it. That way, you don't have to go onto somebody else's property.
Well, I can leave an easement for a connection, but that, that, I don't know, there's a, there's a swamp in there somewhere, I think it's...
Well, I know, I was saying, if you cross, if you cross...
There is a big one up above, but it narrows down to a very small area.
If you cross, like, right over here somewhere, you've only got a little crossing, like, come off the new twenty-seven, little easement down to here, come to the edge of your property right here, and you're done.
But you, you want me to, like, actually make a road?
Twenty footer, so it's the same as...
Haved.
I'm kidding.
I was just gonna say, I'm not making a road, I mean, I'll leave you an easement.
Reed, Reed, what's in, in that subdivision?
It doesn't connect though, it doesn't connect. So, I'd be, I mean, I don't mind leaving an easement and people wanna walk, because anybody can walk in there, but I, I'm not gonna make a road down to there, I can't, it's all two-hundred-foot zone. DCI'd shoot me. But, I mean, I can leave an easement right between those two lots, and people can act, once they get to the open space...
I think that's what I can do, Dick, because otherwise...
I'll leave it up to DCI.
Yeah, good luck.
Can they, do they tip it?
They preset the no.
Because you're, you're looking for, you're just looking for a car trail, right, basically, so people can walk down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
And so, it's too bad that the logging is all done.
So, if some gravel happened to, like, fall off a truck back there, that's, I'm kidding.
The logging is all done over in that area?
Yeah.
It's too bad, because you should have had him going out back there.
Crossing that stream's gonna be tough.
You heard what happened, right? He did that.
I, I wouldn't, in Cleve's position, I wouldn't touch that with ten foot falls.
Because he went in the two-hundred-foot zone.
What the heck is going on here?
Because that, that stream feeds Molton Pond.
He did, he was in here, supposed to just clear here, he went all the way down here. Took all the trees out of here.
I think we need a culvert crossing down there, to get across.
No, not another one of those culverts, those things ruin...
Let's do a bridge, I like that bridge up on Bridle.
So, that's the reason why he hasn't got back to me.
Oh, Paul?
All right, I'm, so what do we, what do we do with the hearing? Do we, because we've just got one that's a field change?
I've had it, you know, DCI, Master Guy, freaking fed up.
So, do we close it on contingent of a field change?
No.
See, I, I don't think so. Me personally, I'd like to see it just extended one more so we can get all the comments in from Hannigan, Carl, and...
Joe.
Joe.
Let me ask you a question, what, what is it that you need?
It's the, the spacing for the catch bases.
That's a field change. So, it doesn't require a public hearing?
It's a field change subject to Joe Buckley, getting something from the consulting engineer that it works, it's functional.
Right, no, I understand that, but it doesn't require a public hearing.
No, the board's liable that it's, if, based on the determination.
So, what I'm, what I'm hearing is, it's not approved, but if it does get approved, it will be approved as a field change. If it doesn't get approved, you're gonna fix it, Cleve. I mean, that's pretty much, it's, you know, it doesn't have anything to do with the public hearing.
That's correct.
I'm fine with that, I mean, as long as that last part happens.
Well, you, no, it has to happen, it has to. Because when I go to turn the road over, I'm gonna get, hey, that doesn't work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, that's why I was asking, Norm, should we close it, and then...
And vote on the waivers if you could, if, if there's nothing, unless you need something else.
What waivers do we...
Do we have the original?
Dave, you have the waivers?
Yeah, the waivers were the piping, plastic instead of concrete, no cul-de-sac, flanking islands, and a change in the width of the crossings. Three of them.
Two.
Three total waivers.
Three total waivers, I apologize, two crossings, yeah.
Okay, so you guys have finished advancing on the piping?
Yes.
Yes.
There's an email from Carl from ten eighteen that says he's happy.
Can we, Dave, can you send that to, to me, get it, get that into the minutes? I'd just like to see, because we don't have it in the hearing, we gotta get it officially somewhere.
Should be.
Thanks. I think that'll take care of that.
If you don't still have it, Dave, I have it, so I can sign it if you don't.
And then that was one. The other waiver was for the, the width, for the twenty-foot.
Cul-de-sac islands, which you guys are okay with.
Yeah, I'm good with that one.
Yeah.
So, do we need to close the hearing and then vote on the waivers?
I'm gonna say, this was just a modification, we blow down the modifications through the approval.
Yes, the only thing you don't now, having the ability to track is this item with the Joe Buckley reviewing the, the distance. So, how do you manage that, I guess?
It was really not part of the public hearing as far as that goes, but, I mean, I can, you know, I, I'll follow up with Joe, I'll make sure that, I mean, if you wanna make, why don't you make it an item on the, on the next hearing, and, you know, that, that one thing. And, and just, that way we'll follow up with it, that way. But this, hopefully this public hearing part of it can go away, because that, that would be nice. And then, if you wanna make a, an agenda item, so the next...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, Dave, what if we put under Brittenall Estates Administrative, catch basin discussion, or catch basin issue resolution, or catch basin resolution?
So, follow up with that on the...
On the administration.
Administrative part of the open...
Yeah, I think that's a good way to handle that.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just before we leave this topic, are you looking to have the easement shown on a plan tonight that can be brought into a decision or something? Or how do you wanna manage the representation of the rail trail?
Just, if you put it on with, with that item, I'll bring in, I'll record an eighty-one X. An eighty-one X doesn't require approval from planning board, it's an easement, but...
Dick, we put that in the administrative thing too, is another point, we can cover it all, kill another bird with another stone.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that done.
All right.
All right.
I think we're there.
Would that be nice?
Maybe we should check with the public to see if they got any comments.
Is they public?
Leah, do you have any comments? Step away from the rabbit or monkey you're injecting. She hurt me.
No comments, you guys are, you guys are good for keeping it all in order, thank you.
She's the only one attending?
Yeah.
Oh.
We're not popular anymore.
Okay, with those two things settled, that we will have it as agenda items for our next meeting, the spacing and the easement shown on the plan.
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
House on move. At seven fifty-eight.
I'll close, I'll, I'll close, I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all in fever?
Aye.
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 I'll go with Mike.
Do we need to do a motion for each individual waiver?
I don't, I don't believe so, I, I think, we should be able to simply reference the hearing.
I don't know if you, yeah, that's, that's what I have right here, this is the legal notice and...
So, okay, motion to approve the amendment to the Brittenall Estates subdivision plan as indicated by the public hearing, originally scheduled for August tenth, two thousand and one.
So moved. Can I repeat that?
No.
Tamika's writing, I see her writing diligently up there.
Mm-hmm, I got it.
Okay, I'm glad she does. So I hear some moved and I hear a second. Is there any discussion on that? I hear silence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, on to the car wash, which I desperately need for my car.
Oh, yeah, we are there.
You need these too, Dave? I don't know what they are.
Yeah, I'll take the extra copies.
Now, these aren't extra copies. I don't know what they were just on the table there. I'm gonna get some rolls.
That's the car wash.
Well, that might, that might be Kevin's.
No, was it? Is that yours that it was on the table here?
Oh, yeah, those are mine.
See that? Sorry. Thank you, everybody. To everybody.
Is there anybody here for the car? Well, and then if, if they're not here, before Cleat takes off, didn't we have some reports in from Britnell and Bryce that we probably? Might wanna cover before he takes off?
They're.
Maybe they're minor. I don't know. I just saw them in there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here, so.
Okay.
We're paving, um, we're paving phase two, final call tomorrow. Yep, and, um, all the bounds are in. All the, the azbills are being submitted to Carl. And all the trees are in and everything's done.
For Britnell Estates, that, the one thing.
Contention part is not.
No, Carl pointed out that it also serves as phase four, so you can't accept it until phase four is accepted. So he, he said, we're not looking at it anyway, Cleat. I said, okay.
Oh, okay, that's moved.
Yeah.
Cause you got, there's like four reports in for all years. It's the only reason I thought so. Bryce actually is the one that pretty much didn't have anything.
Yeah, yeah, it's going good. He's building houses like crazy.
Well, what about the sidewalks on, on Maple Hill?
He's fixing those when he pays that tomorrow. He's gonna fix that tomorrow. All they have is they just twisted a little bit this way. But other than that, Maple Hill, that really is, came out nice, didn't it? Have you been through there? It really looks nice.
Yeah, well, there was, there was a comment and I don't think it has been resolved about some pugging.
That hasn't been resolved, you're right. He's gonna be around tomorrow, so.
Cause it says Joe's supposed to discuss it.
Yeah. I know, I went there after one of the last hearings that we, we had just had. And, yeah, there is, but.
Nothing there.
Doesn't know that, but it's nice on.
Norm, because this is in our subdivision regs for the fifty feet and Carl's saying they're sixty-five.
Yeah.
Do we need to get a waiver? Cause I, I'm fine. I mean.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
We have.
Dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
You're allowed that.
Yeah, no stop signs.
We didn't put that up yet?
No.
Where were we supposed to put it up?
As of October twenty-ninth, it says stop signs have painted stop has not been installed at intersection with Maple Ave.
By the way, speaking of Britnell Estates, I have a question.
Uh, let's go back to that.
Can, can I put a, a street light at the end of, at the end of Grizzly Drive where it was on?
Oh, freaking subdivision streetlights.
You don't have to answer me right now, but.
Are you kidding me?
You can't see a damn thing called top that.
Well, open your eyes. There is, there's no other streetlights on Britnell.
No, there is no.
Yeah, so I can't, I can't do that. Okay. I just thought it would be nice to be able to see to turn in there.
I wanna be able to see the spires.
Okay.
Well, you know how to exactly put a nice lighted sign saying Britnell Estates right at the edge.
Yeah.
With LEDs, yeah, 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 yeah. Just make sure it's twelve by twelve and make sure it follows a signed by law.
Okay.
I'm sure the Carewell Dental lady will sell you a good LED sign.
Are you gonna actually start moving, uh, Phil of Britnell Estates?
Not yet. Not till we start doing the lots. Cause it's, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of loam to move off. There must be an old farm up there or something. There's some loam. There's like a foot and a half of loam up there.
Oh, really? I believe it.
Okay.
Nice, nice loam.
Even as old as it is, it's still nice.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Let's see. I was just brought to Oregon, opened up a carc and sold sleepers.
Oh, this is the one thing that, that, on Maple Hill is, um. Carl made a big comment about this, Cleat, about the emergency spillway having, needs to be, needs to be cleaned out. And the stone didn't seem to meet the specification.
We have Maple Hill?
Uh, yeah, Maple Hill.
We solved that. That's all.
Okay. Again, this is October twenty-ninth. I know it's, uh, and he's been on vacation, so.
We fixed the, um.
That's a picture.
Manual four and five, yeah. Fixed that issue. We got.
And then he talked about getting grass and stuff back. Can't hear where it was all taken apart.
All done. Everything, everything, Maple Hill is one hundred percent. Should be town road, but a.
Yeah, I couldn't figure out why they didn't. And then the other one was, where was the one for Joe Buckley? He was looking for some video.
Yep.
Of catch. Yeah.
I think they, they did that as well.
Bear Hill two.
Yeah.
He was looking for that.
It's all done.
And then something about in bold, uh, inserts are recommended for catch basins near zero fifty. I'm guessing that's over by the. He's got catch basin grates near station zero plus fifty to prevent silt from entering the drain system. The sun bear hill two site inspection.
You go on silt sacks or grates?
He says inserts are recommended.
Silt sacks, yeah. Okay, cause I was wondering. But you know what happens with the silt sacks? Damn catch basins don't work and the water runs down the road. It, it's nothing but a pain, those things. I don't know. I, I, I think we gotta find a way of.
Talk to Joe. I mean, he's a P E. I'm sure he's got a solution somewhere.
Keeping silt out without, I mean, you'd have to clean them. The silt runs in there like crazy when it's raining. I mean, it had some rain, right? You'd have to be there cleaning them all night with the silt sacks to, to keep it out of there.
Sounds to me like we need one of those, uh, what are they? Street cleaner trucks.
They have them. Tommy has one. Suction truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, 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 the, the low.
Oh, they have lots of those.
The street cleaners, you know, sweepers. Thank you, yes. Yeah, sweepers. We just don't have employees to run them. That's the tough part right now. Alright, I think that's all I, when I went through these, that was the highlights. Cause Carl must have did these just before he got on the plane to go to Aruba. I don't know.
Did he go to Aruba?
I don't know. I'm just saying that, uh, these are pretty extensive he went through. Alright, I think that's all I saw.
Yeah. Thing is, all of them still have to go through a final inspection.
Yeah. That's true too. Okay, I'll ask my one last question before you leave on Bryce Lemon. Is the water issue on, on Bryce Lemon two squared away with our four or five houses there?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I got a thank you note from one of the people for fixing the problem the other day.
Outstanding. That's a lovely one to hear.
Yeah, it's all fixed.
Thank you, sir.
The work we did over there though. There's some serious water in there coming out of that ground over there. But because of the big cuts, you know, I mean, you're cutting the ground wise, the ground wise.
Is that gonna be the same problem with, uh, phase three on the other side of that? Okay.
There's one little area near the nuns where it's bubbling out of the ground. We're fixing that. We haven't fixed it yet, but we have.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody.
That's it. Thanks.
Take care.
So do we, let me ask Norm, since we don't have anybody here for seven o'clock, do we just push it? The, the car wash, since there's nobody here, do we just push the hearing? Since there's nobody here for it?
Yeah, why is there nobody here?
I sent an email to the applicant today just reminding them that this matter was on tonight's agenda.
I definitely have some questions, so I would say we're, I would support a.
But, but we can't push it, cause don't they have to sign a piece of paper that they're not here to sign?
But we can open it.
Well, the board could also, I believe, on its own initiative. Indicate that this is a postponement because the applicant was not here as a courtesy. You gotta grant a postponement to a date certain.
Yeah, I don't know if we wanna open it. I just postpone it.
I, you know, if nobody's here, I don't, I don't think it's. But it's on our agenda and I would just, I would, I would. I would. What? Open it. You'd open it? I would open it because then legally and everything else, it's been started. If they knew, they knew better than.
We did have a public hearing, though. It's like sort of something I wanted to agree with Dick because.
If we postpone, will it have to be posted?
No, it would not have to be posted again. The advertisement would stand up. There's no obligation to renotify or otherwise. Inform the public except by way of the agenda. A postponement is valid in this case.
I'm okay with postponing it.
And in the meantime, having looked at this, sorry to interrupt, if the board has any comments or additional questions for the applicant, we can circulate those. Uh, from the staff perspective, we're still waiting for comments from several departments who we submitted this to to get information, so we're still waiting for that. I believe the board may also want us to get a little side visit.
Yeah, we're just gonna say that would be the one thing that I'd ask for. I really, this is my opinion, Norm, and Dave. With all the changes, I looked in those drawings because of the new Palmagussa being built. I really like to have Joe here on this because there's reductions, there's utility poles being moved back. Property, it looks like six to seven feet of property is being taken for the road. I really like Joe to give us comments, cause I don't see this as a high traffic. I mean, we're not having a hundred cars going through in the car wash in a day.
No, maybe the first weekend.
Yeah, but I just.
So then it's gonna.
I wanna get Joe's opinion, cause it's right next to the V P W. They're having the big project all through town. They're putting in sidewalks there. Every utility pole's getting moved back anywhere from two to three to four feet, which means. I, I don't know. I just like to have Joe, at least at the beginning of this, throw some, have, take a look at this and give us some comments.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Has he, has he had the plan?
Um, yes, he has the plans. He was one of the, one of the groups that the information was distributed to for comments.
We don't have a comment from him.
I don't have a comment from any.
Do we need a motion for a postponement? Need to open it up. Not if you're postponing, do you?
A postponement is different than a continuance. A continuance indicates that, that matter was open and then.
Well, you know, we can open and continue.
And then continue.
Or we can postpone. I don't recall us postponing.
I've never, in the many years I've been here, we've never postponed a hearing that I can think of. We've always done what Dick said, we've opened up and continued it.
The idea of the postponement is you don't take any testimony at all. If you do a continuous thing, you're taking some kind of testimony, having some discussion. That's the, that's the distinction on that.
We already did have some discussion without it being open, so let's just open it.
Nothing substantial.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with opening it up, I guess.
Okay, so, okay, we will open the public hearing at eight twelve on proposal for car wash on Palmagussa Road by, uh. The Stinson family, I guess it is. And in light of the fact that the applicant does not have, is not here, does not have a representative here to give us any explanation of the project, we'll continue to.
Um, there's another meeting date on the twenty-third.
I'd say December, cause.
And then the meeting dates, I don't have a calendar at my disposal here.
So December fourteenth, or no, what do we have?
Yeah, December fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
Yeah. I just, if we continue to the twenty-third, that week's usually, I mean, it's, it's Thanksgiving week. I don't know. I mean, I guess we could, but it's sort of like doing it.
Let's put it this way.
I may not, I may not be here on the fourteenth.
I would like to continue it to the twenty-third.
I'm okay with that. December twenty-third? No, November.
Heard a few things. So I, I just wanna give them an opportunity. I don't know. Let's just say.
Alright, I'm good with the twenty-third. Or do we have, Dave, do we have enough room bandwidth on the day?
Yeah, let me just check the hearing notice. Uh, we have a hearing scheduled for Tulakama driveway with the time of six, six forty-five. Tulakama driveway site plan. The board has already seen the A N R. This is the next step on that for one twenty-eight Kenwood.
I might have seen that on the video. Okay.
Yeah, cause they did, they did the A N R.
Yeah.
I believe it showed.
Oh, that's right. It showed the common driveway, but they gotta come back and have to do the special permit for that. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
It's not even a special permit.
It's by right. It's just site plan review and that's it.
So you want eleven twenty-three?
Yeah.
At seven? That one's at six forty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's seven down. Since the board is open this, will you just like to take a quick look through this and see if you have any comments or questions? In the meantime, having looked at this, such that I can get those questions or comments to the applicant. And if we can discuss a site plan, that'd be good, Phil.
My big thing, Dave, is when I looked over the plans, have they discussed this with? Since Joe's in charge of the Palmagussa project, have they discussed any of the, these property reduction poles? I mean, relocation, and again, I'm bad with, with one-on-one, but, I mean, this could be seven to ten feet where they're moving stuff. And then I see, I, I don't, I see their sewer system, but on this drawing, I don't see how they're getting water in here. Because D is the water line that goes up the center of the road, but there's no takeoffs of that to fill these fifteen hundred gallon tanks.
So you have to give a couple of questions.
Maybe they'll have toilets and they get a pool, plumbing pool there.
I, I just, it was one of those things where they go out of the way to design this sewer system, which is taking the water away. But I don't see any water system, so that was one of my questions of how.
And that's another thing that I wanna ask. You talk about the sewer system. Why are we dumping straight water into a sewer system?
Cause it's got soap in it and dirt and could have tar and oil and all that stuff off of cars. That's my guess. Because they've got. They've got on their design over here for the grade, they've got liquid level and then oil and grease levels and sludge levels. And, in their tanks.
And then they get. I thought I was doing something. I didn't look that close. I thought there was something in there that they were gonna be recycling. They have to.
Yes, I believe it. I think it was state law that came out. Okay. Yeah, there's some of the water and then they have grease traps installed here. So I don't believe, but I, I, for me. I'm not, I just assume not talking about any of this until those people get answered the question.
But you also, the hearing, so it's proper to.
Why they're not here, I'm.
But.
I just wanna get questions.
I'm looking for questions from the board has after this quick review, so we're not gonna circulate those to the applicant. It's proper to talk about a review by board members as to what they saw. The questions can come later, but the hearing's been open, so this is fair game to discuss questions that you may have as a courtesy to get them to them, uh, so that by the twenty-third, they have an answer.
It, mine was just the water.
Mine here, I wrote and read is the overflow in the existing sewer system. To me, that doesn't match up.
So it has a question, how do I?
It has a question. Is there any other way to get rid of the water? Keep, keep the grease and all that and, you know.
To get rid of the water associated with the car wash operation.
That is correct, and not through the sewer line.
And again, that's a, that's a good question for Mr. Buckley, who has a P E that could come here and, and ask, you know, for.
Since it's recycled, the first part of that question should be how much water goes into the sewer line.
Yeah.
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 Tim, I didn't quite get your question.
Mine is, is with, with all these parcels being relocated and, and property being relocated. How does, have, has the applicant talked to Joe about how this is gonna affect this design and property? I, I, I know Julian's done this, but it's just.
I do believe, uh, that Sheila dibs it when it first came up. Asked for two sidewalks, one on either side of the road.
Yeah, they're not getting both. I know that.
Because of Deverell School. They wanted to keep the people from crossing Oba, so they wanted to keep the sidewalk on that side. That build, that, that office building we got right now is so close to the road.
Yeah. Well, and that's it. And look, Norm, here's, here's my problem. It's like, here's the existing where it calls. Yeah. Well, and that's it. And look, Norm, here's, here's my problem. It's like, here's the existing, where it calls out the existing pavement, and then they're moving it all the way back to here. This is the proposed edge of pavement. So that's ten or fifteen feet from where the road is right now, that they're moving this back. See, look at that.
Does it go, does it go onto a home station for the swimming pool?
No, no, right here. It says, where did I get that? There's the proposed where it's gonna be, and there's the existing. Look at that distance. That's cutting a lot of property off the front. If, if one inch is twenty feet, that's a half inch, so that's ten feet of property.
You got the bottom of the plan that's up on the screen here?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
You're looking at it right about here?
Yeah, because see, look at that. They're knocking off a significant, and I see, and the existing sewer now will actually be in the roadway. It won't be in a right-of-way anymore, if I'm not mistaken. If you look at the proposed edge of pavement.
I didn't think it was ten feet between the.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Look, look where that proposed is. I mean, literally, that's probably six feet from the edge of the road to the edge of that building. I mean, and look at the utility poles, those UPS, they're moving those back. Those are probably, my guess is six, five to six feet. They gotta move all those utility poles. I mean, Dave, maybe I'm not estimating this right, but, because I don't know if this is the scale, but.
That is the scale. You have a skilled plan. That is the scale.
Then if, if one inch is like that, that's ten feet. If one inch is twenty feet, then a half inch is ten feet. So they're moving that ten feet, that road. And then the.
So that would be done by the state or the world?
Yeah, but that takes away the front of where this property, where you don't getting in and out now. So that's, again, all I'm asking is, the applicant talked to Joe, and is that gonna cause any traffic problems? Is that.
Is there room for a sidewalk? Is it gonna be a sidewalk?
Yeah, that's it, Kevin. All that stuff is.
But the sidewalks, I think I read in the proposal that the sidewalks are gonna be on the other side of the street. That there's no sidewalk in front of that. I mean, I, I just, that's a thought in my head, that there's no sidewalk on that.
That'll be interesting how they cut into the bedrock on the other side.
The, the only thing is.
We need other than the sidewalk.
Just from going all the way down Palmagussa.
Yeah.
I don't see sidewalk being reasonable on that side.
Yeah.
Now you got the parking for the ball field.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen with that?
Everybody's gonna park on the sidewalk.
They were supposed to move the parking to the back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll see if that happens. Anyhow, it's just, I, I, my comment is, is I just wanted the applicant to have some preliminary discussions with Joe and see if there's anything that he, as a PE, that maybe Julian missed.
No, I think that that's a good idea. I don't have a problem with that.
I don't wanna tell him how to design this. I just wanna have him to talk with Joe and see if there's anything that jumps out that Joe might notice that could be issues. Because again, Norm, I mean, literally where that new sidewalk is, it's probably all of Brian's gardening on that side of the building's gonna disappear.
Oh, yeah.
It's all gonna go. Because that road's gonna be six feet off his window at the edge of that building.
Or less.
Yeah, yeah. Anyhow, that's, that's my only comment, Dave, that I really got.
No, that's, that's fair.
The rest of this is, is, we, the applicant really needs to do the explanation, which is, I'm guessing Julian should have probably been here to explain this, correct?
Yeah, Julian's a kid that actually did it.
Anyway.
Wilson did the plan, Julian signed the water.
What else we got?
So do we need to have a motion to continue this?
Yes.
I make a motion to continue the car wash on thirteen Palmagussa Road until, until November twenty-third at seven PM.
Right, second.
And to send a reminder to.
Send a reminder to, to Mr. Matroba at Needs and to Mr. Stittson. I think he's, I apologize. Was he the applicant?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stittson.
BP Properties.
Okay.
Is the name on the, on the phone.
Yeah, to BP Properties, to remind her that we have a continued hearing on November twenty-third at seven PM.
Record that?
You have.
Yes, you did.
Michael for, for the water or do you have this other guy?
He, he was the land surveyor. I think Joe could probably do, because the thing I liked about this is he referenced on here that this is based upon the state design. So when he did this as a survey, he grabbed the state's design to do that, so I'm okay with that. Because it says down here, proposed contours for the Palmagussa Road reconstruction project dated twelve eight twenty twenty, so that's not that old. So I'm okay with that. I just, and Joe's in the loop for this reconstruction project, so.
Did we vote?
I don't.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And we've covered all of these administrative things, right?
All the subdivisions. We talked about the scenic byway.
No, I was gonna ask about that.
Oh.
No.
CMR PC.
Okay, we did CMR PC, so. Uh, scenic byway. Uh, Dave?
Thanks. So the planning office has been working with the regional planning commission on a project to take some of the recommendations, maybe a couple of older reports regarding the scenic byway one twenty-two, and to develop some strategy to implement some of those, some of those recommendations. The recommendations are listed generally in the letter as goals. There are two plans out on reference. One's the Open Space Recreation Plan for twenty seventeen. The other one is the Scenic Byway Corridor Management Plan for June two thousand nine. Each of those plans have goals that are relative to the lost villages scenic byway, also known as Route one twenty-two. So the line I'm sure of it is, I've identified the goals from those two reports, and I have done our reach to the three hundredth anniversary committee, historical commission, and the Open Space Recreation Committee to see if those entities could help with some thoughts on how to implement these goals. I, I have the letter here as a, for information for the board, and also if the board has any thoughts about how to, how to, how to implement these goals, I'd be glad to get that information as well.
Dave, I've just got one question. It's a clarification. On item two under goals made by the Open Space Plan, it talks about one twenty-two A. Is this scenic by, byway one twenty-two that goes by four corners?
Yes.
Or is it one twenty-two A that comes through the center of town?
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two period.
And then it feeds into one twenty-two A, and there's a portion where one twenty-two feeds into one twenty-eight where there's lost villages activity and other historical things of interest.
Right there.
Oh, right at the T?
Yes.
Down by the, uh, Rutland State Park.
It's a little common, a picnic area.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks. I just, I was trying to.
Mill Mills and everything else down there, once upon a time.
Yeah, okay. All right, great, thanks.
How about going further out, one twenty-two, going towards Barry? Is there any, ever anything else up that way?
Oh, yeah, Coldbrook. Coldbrook Hotel and all that.
Well, that was all Rutland back in the day.
That's right.
Yeah, I suppose it was.
Rutland was twice the size of Yonkers.
It was another woolen mill there too, just the other side of the Shaft Eight.
Then they dug the ponds there too. Wherever they dug those, those weren't natural ponds. Those were all hand dug.
So I guess if at any point the board has any thoughts on how to further some of these, that'd be great. I'd like to package these up and just build them into a report that would close out this round of the DLTA project, with a continuation next year.
Oh, uh, see, I put it, I wrote down here, bring it back in twenty twenty-five.
Well, I mean, like number.
Be around.
Number three, I mean, we've got the signage now that, those welcome to Rutland signs that Mike Nicholson did.
No. The thing we're thinking about there are markers or plaques, signs that have information.
Fifty miles an hour, I can't see it then. Well, they would also maybe potentially be on.
We have a kiosk sitting down here.
Eventually little maps or something, people wanna actually go and.
It just has an old map on there that's faded out and can't read it. But what we'd like to do is add stuff to it, you know, things that are going on in town here and.
How many people sent to that little common and had lunch?
Quite a few, yeah.
You'd be surprised. And then if there was, you know, more tables and more desks and some nice, maybe some lights or something. That little area would be a great place to have a farmer's market, but that was my opinion, on the weekend.
Well, it's DCR and they're not gonna allow it. Well, that's watershed area.
Keep doing it until they tell you no.
No, what we need to do is ask DCR Watershed to get lost.
Okay.
And ask the rec. And bring in the DCR Recreation, which is what is right there on Crawford Road.
I don't know the low-impact tourism, Dave, how, what that would be. We just, I mean, Rutland.
Where are we?
Number three, right there.
That would be what, going up to. Like the prison camps. You don't take, you don't have to mess around with it. You know, just go out there and visit and walk around.
Okay.
And hopefully at the kiosk, you pick up information and think about it. And or as in the town study we did, to have some time in the future, maybe a little office made at the historic house, Woods, Woods House there.
You mean the new fire station?
Don't get started on it. Well, the new historic building called the Town Hall.
I'm good with that, Dave. I think it's a great idea.
And then we'll have somebody in there for tourism, you know, that can pass out this stuff also, be in charge, maybe of the historic.
I think we need to get Dave a nice conductor's hat.
Oh, boy.
But I would just look at these, and what I was trying to do is come up with, how do we help Dave?
Think Old Stroud Village versus Six Flags.
Yeah, I like that, but how do, how do we get him to?
What the committee's about.
Okay, but aren't they looking in this letter for the planning office to come up with something? That's the way I read this.
Creating horseback riding trails.
Yeah.
Aren't they, Dave, asking you to?
No, this is a letter that I sent to these entities. I drafted this letter, worked with the original planning commission on this project. I drafted this letter to these groups, figuring that these groups, especially Open Space Recreation, are working on an update to their plan now, so maybe they have some thoughts on how to implement. To the Historical Commission, because a lot of this is of historical interest, perhaps they have some ideas on how to implement. The three hundredth anniversary, because it ties into the town's history, which is in part being promoted through that committee. So I sent this letter to these groups to see.
You getting any feedback?
I got a feedback from the Historical Commission. We had it on your agenda for tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna follow up and see if they want me to be at, well, the issue there is that the meetings conflict. They meet on this Tuesday. Or, but yes, Historical Commission indicated it was on your agenda, and I'll follow up to see if they have any thoughts or would like to meet separately or whatever, whatever we can do.
The other comment I got you on for number eight at the end, has the RBA been reconstituted in Rutland?
Rutland Business Association, sorry, no, it's not reconstituted, I think.
That's gonna be a tough one then, without the support of the local.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a great idea. I just think the RBA would be a great tool.
Well, no doubt about it, but.
You gotta need somebody to reconstitute.
Exactly, you need.
And Addison doesn't live here anymore.
Nobody's starting sending jokes out again.
Is, okay, this is beyond our purview, sorry.
No, it's, it's within the purview. I mean, we need to have a good conversation. And far as I'm concerned, on the open space, we're not that far along, with too many other things are going on. And I don't really wanna get cranked up in that, because I wanna go home and be able to sleep tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anything else on that?
Well, I just, I mean, just so you know, and not that it has to be updated now, yeah, I hear you, I hear you, Dick, because you can go on and on and on, but open space, we just, I mean, I've been working with a couple of people on that for our community garden. We're meeting with Nancy Nichols at the, uh, at the community center. Some of the pieces of property behind there, not to impact the hay fields, but I think some of the, you know, so some of that stuff. recreational sports business relate, you know, I don't know if that falls into some of this, Dave, or not, but.
Yeah, one of the Red Sox.
Some stuff happening. Anyways, buy a local campaign. I think that, you know, for the three hundredth, if we actually had a garden in town that you're actually taking vegetables and putting them on a, you know, and actually selling something that was grown on town.
That's what I think, Kevin, if there was an RBA.
If the vegetables are grown on town property, what we need for the kids is a slingshot, so they can fire them off. See what you can hit.
Yeah, right, the potato launches and a trebuchet to chuck some pumpkins and smash.
I mean, what I, I'm just saying, that's just as an update, this meeting next week with Nancy and so.
But, you know.
I got a neat potato cannon.
Well, there you go. But do you, do you people here on the planning board know what's in? I think it's the two thousand seventeen Open Space.
No, actually it uses hairspray.
That the planning board is supposed to be doing? Norm?
What?
Do you know what was in the open space rec book that the, the planning board was supposed to be doing? That was marked off? Henceforth, that's why things aren't getting done. You know, you can, and that's one of the things that I'm trying, I've told. Well, I filled out one of these things, back and front, and gave it to Melissa. You know, I went through the book, and that's one of the biggest things we're kinda allowed, is there's nobody there to say, hey, what about this? What's, what is Concom doing? What is planning board doing? Are they keeping up to the open space thing? No, we don't even check it.
Well, that was gonna be my next comment, Dick. When is anybody going around, as per the open space bylaw, and cleaned up, checked any, any of the open space areas, walkways, any of that stuff? How about zero?
Ta-da. How about their nice piece of property up at Skyline Drive?
Well, I mean, these would be things that I would say if the board would like to, because that would kinda fall on me to bring it up at the open space meetings. You know what I mean? Except if I'm gonna be, if I'm the liaison there, so, you know, I'll make sure that I bring that up again and make sure. We should, should we be doing sidewalks every six months?
What you just said, sidewalks, it's not like the, the town center, how we had the sidewalks. We got a lot accomplished by having a sidewalk.
Didn't we though, right?
Especially with Leah there. I mean, you know, no, Leah's been on everything, and I'm glad, I'm glad she's here now. Because to me, that is one of the biggest things that we.
I'll make sure I bring that up. I'll, I'll follow up with the, with the planning board a boat.
We need to have a sidewalk.
I, yeah, maybe it's, it's not gonna be every three months, every six months, you know, just a, um, a reevaluation of the open space or some sort of.
Maybe we should be.
I mean, this is great. Like, this is a lot of, you know, also if you start making little notes here, the, the, the community garden, this, 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 I think it's.
And this should, this, I mean.
I didn't know about that. Planning board's supposed to be doing it anyways. And that was in two thousand seventeen, you said.
Yeah, the last, the last book. I believe it was seventeen. I, I just don't.
No, it is.
It was seventeen, huh?
Yep.
So anyways, um. Things are starting to move in a positive direction. The banstand thing's still working out great. Just we don't have a good town common, in my opinion, that to have things, functions like that. So what are we gonna do? What is our town administrator doing? When I handed him a slip of paper, I said, how about, you know, thinking of about a new town center? Town common, whatever. And I showed him about across the street over here. Maybe that's something that we should be involved in. Think hard.
You mean in front of the library, this area?
In front of the library where the old Catholic church used to be across the street. Just a layer, almost two and a half acres right beside it with that little house there. One of the houses, the two houses near the nick.
It's the parking, Dick, that's been the biggest problem in Rutland, is when they have stuff in downtown. And again, this is my opinion, they'd be lucky to get four hundred cars in downtown. And if you wanna have a downtown thing where, like, example, the food truck, you wanna get a couple thousand people in here, where do you put them?
That's one reason why if you got a parking lot for the school, you could utilize that at nighttime or something like that. But I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it was, my neighbor would be willing to sell his place to the town, and he. And he would be very nice and, and easy on them and.
Yep.
Whatever, just to help out, and, and to me, for Christ's sakes, we, we need to be doing this. Before they went and put in the fire and police station, did you ever see what the town common looked like over there? How huge it was?
Before that building got put in?
Before that building put in there, it was almost like the, the houses that were there had a beautiful driveway that pulls way back in, a fountain out there and everything else? Eaten up. So, I'm, I'm sorry to take up your time, but we, we need to keep pushing this, and, and I want, maybe on our next agenda. I know we asked for business meetings and we should be going over our subdivision rules and regulations. But let's open up that open space book and take a look and see what the heck the planning board has in there. And maybe what I'll, I'll try to do, and when I get done brush harden, I'll try to do that, maybe for our next meeting or something like that.
I think it's a great idea.
And I'll go, I'll go through, through the thing and, and see how much stuff the planning board was supposed to be done, whatever to do.
We just gotta, don't quit the hand, cause I got one comment for everybody that's not anticipated in forty-eight hours.
It's actually on your agenda, on the revised agenda?
Oh, I don't.
You don't have the revised agenda, but it was posted.
Oh, thanks.
And I did inform all about that item.
I left your voicemail too.
We aren't doing that, to the next.
Yeah. So. I just have it here just as a promotion, in case anyone hasn't seen it or is not aware of it. You know, with the planning board's help and with the original planning commission, once again, we have a draft bylaw. It was placed on the town meeting warrant as an article twenty-one. So what the town meeting is gonna see is the bylaw itself, the planning board report, which is one page. And then a handout, which is two pages, uh, six slides and five slides, which is an overview of the bylaw. So, and, and this will be a packet, uh, three total pages back, back and front. To be distributed to the town meeting, it's also just here, you know, once again, in case anyone was not aware of it, it has notice of the planning board report. Was posted on the town sign, it was distributed on Facebook, it's on the town's website, under the planning board page, the report and the bylaw. So, just trying, trying to get the message out there.
I liked it.
Dave, is there any thought process of, instead of handing this out, doing a PowerPoint presentation of like ten or fifteen minutes to go through? Cause this is only eleven slides, when you do it in fifteen minutes.
The presentation was five minutes.
Okay.
That's up to the moderator, I mean, I, I know typically they don't like presentations, that's why I have it here.
I just, I don't know. Norm, what do you think? For the rest of the board, I, I like PowerPoint because if you hand stuff out, you know what I do, I'll do, I'll put a bunch of these together.
Yeah.
But if it's, if it's on a screen in front of you.
It's only gonna take, how many minutes?
I think five, you timed it, you said it was five minutes?
What did, you said you, you talked to the moderator, what did he say?
I said it's up to the moderator's discretion whether or not to allow.
Well, you said you will talk or you did talk?
I've not, no.
I, I would think if you ask, he will allow.
Yeah, Randy's gonna let that happen.
I, I don't know, I, I guess.
I'm, I'm either way.
Well, the one thing, I was talking with Dave earlier today, uh, it's been posted on the website, it's been on the sign, da, da, da.
Yeah.
He has gotten no response.
Yeah, but you haven't had one person call you?
No, the only issue of concern was other permitting that may be necessary such as septic upgrades, but that's.
Yeah, you guys talked about that in the last meetings, I remember that explicitly.
But that disagnol.
We can't do anything about that.
Other permitting.
Yeah, that's the board of health, we have no control over that.
But there's been no hard criticism against this that I'm aware of.
So.
From that standpoint, I'm saying, don't, don't take this the wrong way, why waste the time of a presentation if you haven't got any feedback right now?
Well, the, the question is how many people are aware of it?
Correct.
So.
Most people aren't gonna know about it till that night.
Till that night, and therefore I think.
And there'll be forty people that know about it.
But then they're gonna want the information.
That's why.
I think if it's five minutes, we push to have it done, we've done our due diligence, we've shown it all out there, if anybody brings up any negative feedback, then.
That's a good point, Kevin, cause remember, we didn't, it's a good selling point, I like that. Because remember that last bylaw, a couple of meetings back, where we got, we, we did the bylaw and we really didn't do a good sell on it?
Yeah, we got hammered.
Yeah, we got hammered hard, so, I think it's not a bad idea, just do a quick presentation on this. And then at the end, typically when I do training and there's a, there's like a last slide, any questions? For, and then just see if there's any questions about this from the audience. And then let Randy take them, cause he, unless he turns it over to Dave.
No.
Randy typically asks him questions. And then at that point, I think we've done our due diligence.
Yeah.
I like it.
I would lean towards a, an active, uh, presentation.
Yes. Do you, is it just the moderator you have to talk to, Dave, or is, do you gotta go to the select board?
The moderator, the moderator has to seek permission of the meeting.
Okay.
Because Dave is not a resident.
He's not a resident, yeah, okay. I say do it, that's my opinion of the board.
That does kinda like.
Yeah, I think we should do it.
Okay, next.
A matter coming before the zoning board tomorrow night, uh, twelve filter guards wireless petition. Um, the board is entitled to notice this may matter, so like any other instances, I'm just bringing this to the board's attention, whether or not the board has any questions. Or would like to see the presentation, I can go get it from the link, but I have to leave here to do that because it's not, no.
Let me, let me just ask Dave, cause I've heard bits and pieces, i- is this gonna be a contentious meeting? Is there a lot of requirements not to do it? Um, I, I guess anybody I'm, I'm opening up to, cause I saw the signs and I, it's a cell tower.
It's a cell tower, but to me, for kind of loud, way the heck back, all I can remember, you have to watch out for kids, small kids. And when you're talking about waves and things like that, and that's.
This is a private, this is going on private land.
But it's close to Naqwa.
And it's right here.
It's right there, it's gonna.
So it's a, I mean, I'm just going from somebody that lives on the other side of this town, I don't see it every day, but when I do drive through the center of town, I don't wanna see another. Cell tower.
I mean, it's gonna be sent back personally.
Are you gonna see it? Weren't they supposed to do a whole balloon thing?
Yeah, they did already the balloon thing, if I'm not mistaken, it's already been done.
Yes.
And they didn't get any comments.
And DPW wanted the easement to come off of the right of way here, so that electrical, whatever has to do, will come off between Naqwa and Central Tree.
So it wouldn't be through the school, if I remember reading.
So they did the balloon thing, and was the balloon thing publicly? I mean, again, this is all about how much, you know, can anybody go back and say?
No, they had public notice of this.
This wasn't known.
But it was not set up, like, all these telephone poles that got the cardboard on there, a hundred and forty foot cell tower, your kids and all that.
Yeah, but my argument with that is, is these kids are walking around with cell phones that are given RF frequency and they have them against their heads twelve hours a day, so.
Trust me, I, I, I realize that, but so how may Christ, I, I, where, where's the cell towers now?
Dick's got, Dick Barakian has one over by his property.
He's got the biggest one around.
Yep.
Route sixty-eight's got one, but there's nobody, there's only a couple houses over there.
Yeah.
Congregational church has one.
Up in the, up in the.
Up in the, up in the.
Stable, yeah.
So I'm not a technology guy, but one thing I'd like to know is five years from now, ten years from now, where do we see our technology? Cause I was under the impression that cell towers were gonna not kinda be there and they're all satellite driven.
That's right.
If that's true, and then in five years, if this cell tower is obsolete, who's paying to take it down?
That's part of the.
Oh, thank you for bringing that up.
That's in their, that's, that's in, I read their whole document, there's a, an estimate in there to have it taken down, I don't know if they do that as a, a bond? Or how they do it, it's, it's somewhat like our, our solar, yeah. Yeah, they had an estimate, that was in the back of the package.
You know, all that type of stuff.
Maintenance is done by the individuals who are leasing the property, which I think is AT&T, if I'm not mistaken.
To answer your question, I'm surprised it hasn't happened more here, but the next technology is more line of sight. With antennas being put on poles, with shorter links between going to some back hall to a central area. If you, in the city of West, you'll see these antennas on the poles themselves, so that, I thought was where this was going. More line of sight, but because of the frequency has limitations on how much, how the signal could travel over a period of time without it being attenuated. Cause that's the line of sight concept, because trees could attenuate buildings and so forth.
Yeah.
How far was Dick Barakian's house from the cell tower behind his house?
It's quite, it's quite close.
Well, because that's so tall, the fall zone.
Yeah.
The ice that came off of that broke a lot, I believe, I heard it broke a lot of windows, and that was told to me the other day, um, Mr. Mosey or down below down here was telling me. Too bad Dick wasn't around.
That was the next thing I was just wondering about, it's the exact same thing, we're at the highest friggin' ice, you get the.
And the wind blowing and, yeah.
All, all I remember is.
This is tomorrow night?
Yeah.
What we went through to get the public service.
Yeah, yeah, right over here, and that's what, a hundred and twenty, was that about?
Well, that's not even close, that was like eighty feet or something like that, sixty to eighty feet.
It was a little bit better than that.
It was basically just trying to get communication over to Glenwood, that was the biggest, they didn't have any communication over to Glenwood, so that was going to. Yeah, that was a whole hullabaloo.
Oh.
I'm glad this isn't in our purview.
Well, like I, like I tell everybody, it should be on Rice Hill, it's the highest hill between the ocean and, and the Berkshires. That's where the tower should be.
Does the planning board get an opinion on this or no?
No.
Just as individuals, we can have an opinion?
Yeah.
Tomorrow night?
No, we can, we can have an opinion.
We can send an opinion to them, if I'm not mistaken, a written opinion.
Yes.
I have no.
Well, I just don't particularly, I lost a brother from military. He, he worked in the military in California for kind of long, and when they brought the planes in, they never shut off the master control, and the radars were going all the time.
So he got the radiation from the old radar?
Died up.
Microwaves, basically, he got microwave.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, anyway.
Do we need to send a comment?
Uh, no more phones, the kids.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Take their phones, you know, uh.
Show them what a rotary dial phone looks like and scare them.
Let's go back to two tin cans of the string.
Amen on that.
From a planning perspective, what our town is, my opinion, what the center of our town is trying to work towards. Visually speaking, I don't know that a cell tower in the middle of the town is what our.
I don't like it.
Yeah.
Personally.
But it's not visible.
Yeah, see, that's the thing is, it, it's in the middle of a wooded area.
But it's still a hundred and forty feet, so it's still gonna be, just like this, when you're coming over Pound Hill, you can see this tower just as easy as anything else.
Did anyone see the balloons, the two days that they flew?
I didn't.
I wasn't around to see.
I wasn't around either, you know what I mean, and that, that, that's my whole point, is like, I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
Did you see the balloon?
If the board wants to see what the balloons look like, there is a photo simulation as part of the plan set, I'd have to get out of here, go to the ZVA page if you wanna see that, but the balloons are shown on the photo simulation.
Why were the balloons only there for two days?
That's a requirement.
If I remember correctly, and I could be remembering incorrectly, but I believe it was one weekday and one weekend day, for four hours each.
Something like that, yeah, the Saturday and then the weekday.
And this was all publicized?
Yes.
Was it on telephone poles?
It, it was on the town website as part of the calendar.
What's that?
What's the town website?
And the town sign as well, so.
See, I guess for me, I believe that this tell, this public hearing should have been the announcement of the time, hey, just so everybody, cause tomorrow night, if there's two hundred people there tomorrow night? That's what you tell people, that there's gonna be a balloon next Saturday, can everybody please mark their calendars? Cause the two hundred people that are gonna be on the call tomorrow night, I'm sure did not know that there was a balloon thing a month ago. That's my point.
Yeah.
I just.
I would have thought that the abutters would have gotten direct notification.
They did, I saw that in the package.
So.
Abutters are one thing, and abutters are ten, ten people? I mean, this, this, I, I think involves the whole town. In my opinion.
Parents that have children in school.
It's right in the center of our town, it's not.
It gotta be proactive, and that's what.
And that's what I don't like about, I just feel like this was, I think that, I, I.
I'm a technology, so I mean.
I think we're going around the, around the city at this point. Either we send a comment to the ZVA or we don't, yes or no? Yes, no?
I would say yes, I would like to send a comment.
Yes, I got no.
I'm saying no.
Well, the planning board doesn't have to send a comment, but.
Well, no, no, individuals.
Anyway, oh yeah, absolutely, that's fine, so as a board, we don't have to send one, but I just. I just feel like this is something that if the majority of the townspeople were asked, they would feel as though.
But is that the right question to ask? Well, is that the right question to ask? This is not a subject for the entire town to decide upon.
Correct.
This is a special permit according to the zoning bylaw.
Zoning Board of Appeals makes this.
Yeah, Zoning Board of Appeals, yeah.
Right, and I totally understand that, but they also make their decisions based on public comment?
Uh, no. One would hope that they first do it according to the law.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I, I will give our ZVA, cause I've sat through a couple of meetings, there's been some pretty significant emotional and, and, you know, try sales pitch a financial. They follow the law pretty exclusively, I, I will give, um, that group a thumbs up on that one.
And I didn't mean, the way that you brought that back to me was, and of course I understand a lot, but this has a visual impact on the center of our town, and I thought it has a.
Not if nobody saw the balloons.
Not, nobody knew the balloons were out there.
It does, if you didn't see them, you didn't see them, anytime they were up, they can't have a visual impact if you can't see them.
Well, my point is that they're up for eight hours.
Yeah, is up, his point is that.
And there's nine thousand people in town, those nine thousand people did not walk to the center of town and look to see where the balloon is, cause they didn't know it was there.
And the argument, you can.
And I didn't care.
Yeah, see, that's gonna, really, that was gonna be my point.
And that's why I think tomorrow night would be that question, if, if two hundred people show up for this and this becomes an issue, then I think it would be, how many people saw the balloons?
I like to go to that meeting.
And if everybody says.
That isn't the way it was done and it's not going to be done.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
But should it have been done that way?
It can't be done that way by the bylaw.
Correct.
You can't hold the public hearing until you have the information that you need, and part of that information is the flying of the balloons and comments from that. That's a requirement to hold the hearing.
There's a specific.
So why wouldn't the hearing be opened before?
Because you can't open the hearing until you can collect the information.
Yeah, just to further what Peter's saying here, the bylaw requires.
Sounds backwards.
Pre-application conference and it requires a balloon test prior to the hearing, that's in the bylaw itself.
Yeah.
So the applicant's gonna say.
Then the bylaws should be changed.
No, the bylaws should not be changed, because it's just like, it is just like the planning board does not act on an application till the application is complete. The application for a, for a tower must include the balloon flight, the, the hearing can't be opened until that is submitted.
That's my point.
No, that's, this general law, this is the way hearings are held in every group i- in, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is supposed to be the way it's done, you collect information to make sure you have everything you need, and then you have a public hearing based upon all that information, and then you make a decision.
Right, but if nobody saw the balloon.
But it's part of the process, there is a packet of information of a hundred and seventy-one pages, give or take.
Yeah.
There are several pages that are photo simulations, the pages that are photo simulations show the balloon, so, assuming someone has an issue with visual content, I guess they might. Make that case talking to the photo sims. content, I guess they might make that case, talking to the photo sims, which show the site from different angles. And the, you can only see the balloon from certain angles, not all, but some, I suppose that would be part of the hearing process, because now doing what needed to get done to create a complete application, there's no information to discuss, and that might be one of the items.
If there's two hundred people there tomorrow, I'd like to go and say, expect all of you, November eighteenth, at the town, uh, special.
If there are two hundred people, the meeting will be postponed.
Okay.
Cause this room can't support it.
Yeah, it's out there, whatever that is.
Even Blair won't support two hundred people.
No, about ninety, roughly. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying that our special town meetings, we're lucky to get forty, sixty, we're lucky, so.
Yeah, but.
It's Leah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I, I saw the balloon, cause I was looking for it, but I guess that that was one of my, um, kind of comments was, it wasn't noticeable if you were just driving around town, it wasn't, it, um, you couldn't, and I think this is what Dave was saying with the visual repen, representations in the packet. Um, unless you knew exactly where to look for it and everything, it was not, it was barely above the tree line. And obviously it was over the summer, so the trees were all filled in and everything, it would be interesting to see it in the winter, but there were no complaints or questions as to why there was a random red balloon flying in the air off of Maple Ave closer to the schools, so even if the balloon test itself wasn't well-publicized, or people felt that it wasn't well-publicized, I knew about it, it was on the town website and the town sign. And I thought it had been discussed at a couple of different meetings, just as an FYI, but, um, it was not so obvious just driving around town that, oh, that's a random, why is there a balloon flying in the air, there were no questions, I didn't hear any questions as to why there was a balloon flying in the air, so, um, I guess that that can go, argument of either way, that if the balloon was actually at the hundred and forty foot mark, then it wasn't with tree coverage and everything, it's barely noticeable, so I don't know. That was gonna be one of my questions tomorrow night, is, was that balloon flown at a hundred and forty feet?
I think it's required, if I read the, if I read their application, it has to be at the height of the tower.
Oh, yeah, makes sense.
The tower or the antenna?
Well, the tower with the antennas off it is one forty, if I, cause they did where, they had, um, height where stuff was going to be on the tower from, uh, the antennas, and, and then the top of the tower, and I think if I'm not mistaken, the top of the tower was one forty total. There's no antennas sticking on top, all the antennas are on the side.
Also, if I may, this is not gonna be a massive steel structure, this is a monopole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing is, if, if, as Leah says, if the balloons weren't particularly noticeable, then probably either is gonna be the tower.
Yeah. Hundred and forty feet, yeah, I.
So, why are they, uh, what's, what's driving it to, for them to put it in?
Way above.
Access.
Yeah.
I mean, we got this side of town, at my house, I'm on the vessel by, I got two bars.
Oh, really?
If I'm lucky.
So how is this balloon not visible?
You might have better, because you're on the other side over by Dick's.
Three times over.
I get two bars. I literally can barely get in the house.
I'm not buying it.
I'm sorry.
With that, with that pole now, where it's gonna be, because everything's downhill for me where I'm at, I'll have, I'll have better access with, uh, cellular coming off that pole, presuming Verizon uses antenna, cause right now I just see AT&T and I don't have AT&T.
Where was I?
Okay. And the left.
Just before we do this, in the ordinary case, I provide some correspondence to the ZVA indicating that the planning board review the matter and handle comment one way or the other, I guess, is that what we're doing here?
We had comments.
We had plenty of comments.
Yes.
Yeah.
I find it, again, I'm just sitting here saying, they, they had two days with four hours each, in the middle of a Saturday, when the majority of the town is off with their kids in soccer practice, I mean, who's up there looking for this balloon for four hours on a Saturday afternoon?
Well, Leah was, and she said she couldn't see it.
Leah was, because she's on the select board, but the aver, you know, what I'm saying is that.
But once again, that's what the law requires.
The law requires, and I get it, but it just, if that was the bare minimum, it would've been nice to have said, I, oh, the minimum is four hours, but in interest of the town, they left it up there for three days. Why do the bare minimum, when, what's the harm of allowing that balloon to be there for two days or three days? Who would that hurt?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-four hour, three days.
Four hours, I, I, that's, I know I'm the minority, cause it's only two.
I'm gonna tell you from a consulting engineering standpoint. I'm gonna do what's required by the law, and that's it, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Well, you know what, then, when it comes down, then I, I, on the other hand, try to go above and beyond as a business owner and do what I think is best for the town and my neighbors and everybody else, and I don't think this.
Corporate America's not that philosophy.
Exactly, and that's why I would say no to corporate America for the center of Rutland.
Yeah.
Well.
No, thank you.
But you need a legal reason for the ZVA to deny it, it's not that people don't like it or don't want it, there must be a legal reason.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it comes in because that's the law.
That's the same.
Well, is there a law against potential cancer-causing antennas?
Except that there isn't any, that's a.
Exactly. So there's really nothing that, so, it's unfortunate.
It's the same thing on the planning board, we have to go by the law, not by the personal opinion of.
Yeah.
Oh, this isn't a, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that the law states that the balloon only has to be there for four hours, it just.
Twice during a, a regular day and.
Lows my mind. That is so, that does, does not, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna have.
That's not, that's not getting us anywhere.
I know, but it's.
So.
So in terms of what I did to report to the planning, zoning board, it's just a very general statement that the board has no issue one way or the other. It's probably to that effect, like I usually do.
Yeah, same thing as usual.
Same thing as usual.
I don't know that that's, yeah, well, because, because it's not legal, I do have an issue with it.
Well, I think the collective, the three to two indicates no collective action by the planning board.
Two members of the board had an issue and three did not, that should be the statement.
We're usually doing my report.
No, that should not be the statement, the statement should be the decision of the body.
Yes.
Okay, just tell me when I can talk.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop this here because we're done with that. Um, you have the last item.
I, I got frustrated, being that, um, I was reviewing the, the bylaw, the warrants, and seeing that, uh, I shouldn't say frustrated, I'm happy Dave's getting his, his cold and everything, but that they, that the town was restoring all of the, um, monies to the town employees that they'd taken away and also giving them their raises, what they didn't restore, and what I was frustrated about, was the stipends. Because we are special town employees, I figure, I feel that our stipend should be part of that re- restoration process that they're doing in Article five or six, or, I'm sorry, warrant Article five or six. So I approached the town administrator and said, listen, what's going on here, I think you guys forgot something, and he goes, oops. We didn't even think about that. So he put together a, an amendment to that, um, warrant article, to, uh, that I was gonna do as a citizen, um, to restore the stipends, not only to the planning board, but to the board of health, the moderator, the select board, and the board, I think of assessors is the other one that gets, there's like five that has, um, stipends, and I'd, I'd ask for that to happen. So I got in that, Ron had been great and got me that information that I need to do that, I just wanted to make sure before I did that, does my board have any issues with it? I had always passed mine back, actually, so, I don't have an opinion about that, I didn't do this for stipends, so. Okay. I put mine back under the general fund, so. What's that?
I don't think they should've taken them.
I agree with you on that one. Now, I tried negotiating with him on our half and said, you know, we need a thousand bucks back, he wouldn't do that. But that could be the next discussion, so I just wanna make sure. You're, you're straight, and as of, if I remember right, it was either eight or nine that we volunteered to help the town out.
Something like that, yeah.
To reduce it by half, and with the intention of when things got better, we would have it back up, that's never happened, anyhow. So if the board's okay, I'll go ahead and still go down that path. Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure, was everybody's okay, cause I sort of did it, cause I wanted to get it started, and then I left you a message and, and talked to Dave, and wanted to get it on the agenda item, so I could at least make sure the board's okay with it, and I wasn't going around the maple. Okay, I'll, I've got all the documentation, so I just have to make sure I stand up, I am doing this as a citizen of Rutland, not a planning board member.
Is there any other business to come before the board?
First of all, adjourn.
Is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.